meeting. We're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Our pledge of allegiance and invocation tonight will be by Reverend Jesse Ortiz of the New Vision Christian Ministries International. So, Mr. Ortiz, welcome and thank you for coming. Please rise and then remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, we thank you for this...
You may stand in.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together once again. We ask that you bless this meeting and everyone present. May those that speak tonight speak with confidence and may they share their heart with clarity as they make their petition. We ask that you remind each and every one addressing this council of the common goal which lies outside ourselves. Let us not focus only on our personal gain and personal security, but the greater cause which includes the welfare of our friends, neighbors, community, and generations to come. We are thankful tonight for all those who are here actively participating in the development and care of this community. We are thankful for this wonderful and beautiful city and the people within it. We ask that you bless and give wisdom and guidance over this appointed council and our community leaders. As they hear the words spoken tonight, we ask that you give them discernment and direction. Let them be reminded of the responsibility to judge and represent not out of personal interest, but for the welfare of this community. We lift up each council member to you this night as they come before you and your people. Tonight, we take confidence in the fabric which holds this community and this nation together. That fabric is love. Almighty God, we ask that you hear our prayer. Examine our hearts. Let your will be done as we come to give you thanks. Amen.
Amen. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the member of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, we have one presentation tonight. Is Chris Maggison here? Okay. Oh, closed session, sorry. Our attorney will bring us out from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session on items CS1 and CS2 on this evening's agenda. No actions were taken that are required to be disclosed at this time.
Thank you. And now for the presentations, and we have a proclamation for North County Solutions for Change declaring an imperative to resolve homelessness. So, Chris Maggison, if you'll come forward. Here comes the team. And so, I'm going to read our proclamation here. So, welcome, everyone. Come on back here. And then I'll give you a chance to say something. So, the proclamation, and it says we have a few whereas' here. Whereas family homelessness is a challenge with an impact on every city in North San Diego County, and results in unacceptable living traditions for adults and their children, has a negative impact on multiple generations of adults and children, diminishes the quality of our communities, and leads to an increased total cost of public support while impairing productivity. Whereas Solutions for Change is pioneered and effective program of creating access to knowledge, skills, and resources that result in a permanent solution to family homelessness, thus restoring families to a productive place in our communities while lowering the total cost of public support. The mayors of the cities of Carlsbad, Escondido, Oceanside, San Marcos, and Vista declared a region-wide imperative that permanent solutions to family homelessness be pursued. We hereby pledge and promise to move this imperative forward using the vision, model, and plan developed by North County Solutions for Change known as the Solutions for Change Model. Whereas it's our intent and promise to advance the goals of this imperative throughout the region for the purpose of developing more access to the Solutions for Change Model and to support the replication and scaling of this model, thereby creating more efficient and faster access to the educational, employment, income, and health resources that homeless families need to gain and sustain housing stability. So, now therefore it is resolved jointly by Mayor Hall, Mayor Abad, Mayor Wood, and Mayor Desmond and Mayor Ritter that we hereby draw the attention of the public to this regional imperative lead by North County Solutions for Change and acknowledge and thank the community for their commitment to moving this imperative forward. So, congratulations to you, and we wish you the best of luck in having a permanent solution to having no more homeless in North County and maybe throughout the nation. This is a model that'll work throughout the nation. And you might like to say a few words here. Thanks.
I'd like to thank Mayor Ritter and the city council here and all of you. Thirteen years ago, right across the street, a little girl pulled on my sleeve and said, "Hey, mister, do you live here too at the winter shelter here at All Saints Episcopal Church?" That started in an effort by the Vista community. So, these are people of Vista that came together around a vision of kids not having to sleep on the floor of winter shelters to help these families and kids get back into homes. And now thirteen years later, we've let over 1,300 children and 640 families out of the churn of homelessness, back into homes with jobs and the resources they need to stay housed. And it started right here in Vista, and it's now spread across North County. Now with five mayors and a lot of other supporters, this model now is being presented as a model to solve family homelessness in other communities across the country. It started with the five mayors here with this imperative and proclaiming it. And as we move forward now, I want to look back ten years from now and say that they say the people of Vista built something that led thousands of children, tens of thousands of kids, out of deep poverty, homelessness, and back into homes. And it started right here in Vista. Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. And the recommendations on the consent calendar, C1 through C14, will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak to the clerk or secretary. The items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the balance of the calendar. And so, right now I have items number C3 pulled, C11, C13, and 14. So, does anybody, anyone else down here want to pull any other items? Okay, so not seeing any. So, I would look for a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion. David.
It was Amanda and Dave. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, the first item we will take then will be C11, appointments to the various commissions, boards, and committees. Nope, never mind. Back over here. C3. First item we'll take is C3, which is the treasurer's cash report, and that is Chuck Rabel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple questions. The report says there's a... That we have $172.5 million, okay, in cash and investments. We're getting nothing in return because they're all tied up with federal funds. In the meantime, we owe money, bonded money like Prop L. And I don't understand why we can't pay down some of those bonded indebtedness that we have, that we're paying a much higher rate than we are on $172 million, drawing nothing right now. Please.
Go ahead, Mr. ... Thank you. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and city treasurer here at the City of Vista. To answer Mr. Rabel's question, yes, we do have $172 million in cash and investments here at the city. But what we must remember is that is not all one entity. As we know, we have various funds in the city, the general fund, the gas tax fund, the sewer funds. There's about fifty separate funds within the city. So, we really have almost like fifty separate little businesses going on here. And you can't take money from business A and give it to business B so that it can pay its debt. We have debt service funds established here within the city with various resources dedicated to make payment on the bonds. But we can only, you know, make so much per year. We only have resources available that are limited. We can't just scoop into that whole $172 million and use it as we wish.
Okay. Do you have other questions?
No. I'll find out where these fifty funds are. That's all. Thank you.
I guess I would need a motion then and a second to pass this.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's cash report.
Second? Anyone?
I'll second.
Amanda, okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And the next item is C11, which is appointments to various commissions, boards, and committees. And I have the person, the speaker. You want to hear the speaker first? Would be C11? I mean, would be Bill Martin?
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, members of the council. My name is Bill Martin. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing me to serve on the planning commission these past eight years. It's been an invaluable experience in my own career as a professional city planner, and together we have accomplished good things for our community. I also would like to thank John Conley and all the staff in the Community Development Department. They are all top-notch professionals, and they work hard to make Vista a better place to live and do business. I know why the mayor is removing me from the planning commission, and I gladly accept my fate for my supposed transgressions. If I had an opportunity to do it all again, I would. I would again demand that you conduct our business in an open manner and in compliance with state law. I would again ask that you redirect our talented economic development staff back to their core mission of downtown revitalization and business expansion and business retention instead of the direction you have provided them, which is to pursue gimmicky money-making schemes that devalue the quality of our life and debase the image of our city. So, I'll leave now, but I'm not saying goodbye as I look forward to the next chapter where opportunity again presents itself to serve the people of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we accept C11.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes.
I would like to make a comment on the vote that I'm making. I will vote to approve this item, but note my objection to the appointment to the planning commission.
That motion passes unanimously. The next item that was pulled is item C13, which is our facade improvement program. I have two speakers. Would you like to have a report or hear the speakers first?
Speakers.
Speakers, okay. First speaker is Ken Leon.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, city staff. My subject is the mitigated negative declaration for the digital billboards proposal under C13 labeled facade improvement program. My questions. Why does the MND continue the myth that you are proposing digital message boards when the truth is that you are proposing large, gaudy, commercial signs on elevated poles? Please give the voters credit for critical thinking. Will you perpetuate the myth by hiding such expenses in places like the facade improvement program? You are giving the city record a bad name. Your inclusion in the MND of the simulated signed photos at their ugliest on the Vista horizon demonstrates your tone deafness and myopia to what you are doing in the name of the voters. What you are really saying is loud and clear, "The voters be damned." The MND conclusions by the city staff are breathtaking in their attempt to skew the data from every perspective and to deny the obvious visual blight that your proposal will bring to Vista. The MND conclusions are matched by your collective and continuing budgetary delusion about creating revenue with digital billboards. Your optimism is only a reflection of the sign company's promises. You have no hard data. I ask those of you in favor of the digital billboards, do you expect to receive 2014 campaign donations or campaign support in any manner from the outdoor advertising industry? Alternatively, who among you will publicly declare that you will refuse such donations? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chuck Rabel?
Hello again. A couple questions if I might. When were these properties purchased? That he wants to cite these billboards on.
I don't know exactly when the properties were purchased, but we've owned them for quite some time. I don't have the exact date, Mr. Rabel.
So, they were purchased prior to the zoning change that snuck through the planning commission that authorized, signed, city to put signs on city property.
We've owned these properties for quite some time.
Okay, my problem is the process. Typically, the process is you do the mitigated negative declaration, and we're doing that last. Forget where the money comes from, but it was a better use of the money. We went out with an RFP and found a contractor after the zoning change, I believe. And it's just all backwards. And typically, the study and the MND, okay, is done by the planning department, not the economic development department. And I drive around Vista a lot. I see all kinds of available for rent, for lease, for sale signs. I also see when I go to Vaughn's, I see the sign that says, "No panhandling." Yeah, that's right. Right here in Vista, right down the street, "No panhandling." The area does need to be cleaned up, but economic development needs to do its job and see to it that the properties both in the business park and in all of the strip malls all over town, somebody gets in those stores. And this idea of the magic of electronic billboards is... It could well be a myth. And the idea that one of our neighbors is doing it and we need to do it is the worst kind of junior high school mentality that I've seen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, would you like a report on this, or do you want to... Yes, or would you like to make a motion somewhere?
I'll make a motion to approve item C13.
Let's see. Are there more? Oh, there's... Never mind. There's more speakers, which I didn't see there. Okay. Stephanie Jackal. Followed by Cliff Kaiser. Sorry, I have more speakers. I didn't see those.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Stephanie Jackal. I actually came this evening for a totally other purpose, but I discovered there are a couple of things that I need to comment about. This facade improvement program was kind of my adopted baby when I was at VVBA. And we brought it forward, and we got the ordinance passed thanks to the council that made it possible, and it was up and going. So, imagine my dismay then to see that you are taking funds... Oh, let me also say that I was pleased to see now that the eligible area for the facade improvement program has been expanded. And that's wonderful. That's very good. But imagine my dismay to read that you are taking funds from a program that's meant for beautification of our community to fund a program that will be visually damaging to our community. That's just such an oxymoron. I don't know. And I deeply regret that that's what you're doing. Thank you.
Cliff Kaiser?
Good evening, Mayor, council. This item is really the irony of ironies in that the facade improvement program states it's designed to aesthetically improve certain parts of Vista. And here we are putting this ugliness in billboards on the freeway. I just don't understand that conflict there. But more than that, this agenda item continues the behind-the-scenes sneakiness of this whole digital billboard stuff. I mean, it became public comment before it became to the city council. And unfortunately, we just lost a superb, highly respected city commissioner because of these dirty politics. That gentleman should still be on the city planning commission, but he let go because he was out raising the red flag that these billboards don't belong here. And here we have it in an agenda item that's not even on the agenda. We're talking about it's a facade improvement, and here we are saying we're going to authorize funds for the digital billboard. Okay, so we say, "Why are we authorizing funds if they're already expended?" Well, maybe it's just an administrative item. Even so, why are we putting an administrative item with such public scrutiny hidden in the agenda item of something else? It just doesn't make sense. It's sneakiness. It's so disingenuous to the city of people, the people of the city of Vista.
Mayor, if I could, council, there has been no agreement for the digital message boards that'll be coming before you in the coming months. And it's typical to take any environmental action prior to bringing forth an agreement. And so, the council on October 23rd, 2012 appropriated approximately $143,000 for economic development strategies. Part of those strategies was specifically $75,000 for this facade improvement program, which is being appropriated in this item if it goes forward. And the remaining monies, $60,000 or so, were to be dedicated to economic development strategies, which the digital message board is one, to generate income. So, I just wanted to clarify that the environmental process is being done prior to the agreement coming before the council, and that is very standard.
Okay, so now we are back to... Did you want to... We have a motion?
I have my speaking light on. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to those who have spoken on this item. I also requested that it be pulled from the agenda because I thought it deserved discussion. The facade improvement program is a wonderful program, and I really like the projects that we have in here, and I think they are very necessary for the city, and I look forward to having them completed. I, however, was also caught up on the $60,000... I, however, was also caught up on the $60,000 transfer from the general fund to that consulting professional services fund for the digital billboards. Because I also, Ms. Jackal took the words right out of my notes, that it is a little odd for me to have a facade improvement program for the beautification and the redevelopment of our community with the digital billboards, which are basically just advertising giant boards. To me, that doesn't add to the beautification of our community, so I find it a little odd to have it in there. And I would like to see the request for the transfer of funds for that to be a separate item, not put in with the general facade improvement program. Because as I have said before, publicly and privately, there is nothing I will vote for to move forward the project of the digital billboards, because I am adamantly opposed to the digital billboards in Vista. So with that, thank you, Madam Mayor.
So do I still have a motion in a second?
Motion stands.
Motion stands. Second?
I'll second it.
Please cast your.
I'd like to make a substitute motion on that, that we adopt this item minus the $60,000 general fund transfer, but approving the $75,000 for the facade improvement program at this time. If there is a second for that motion. If not.
I would second that if it's agreeable with the first.
Sorry, I would second that motion if it's agreeable with the first motion, whoever proposed the first motion.
I guess I don't know the logistics of this. My motion that I made is to adopt item C-13 as presented.
So council member Campbell, your motion is to adopt only the first part?
Only the $75,000 for the facade improvement program.
And not to adopt the other?
And not to adopt the $60,000 for the professional services for the digital message board project.
And so, and you're seconding that?
I would second that motion, yes.
Okay, please cast your votes.
So we're casting a vote on the second motion?
On the second motion, right?
Substitute motion.
On substitute motion. Wait.
Start it again.
Okay. That motion fails, so we'll go back to the first motion. And then, do we need to make it again? Okay, okay, then we'll vote on the first motion. That motion passes. Okay, so moving on on our agenda. C-14. Which is the Central Vista Business Improvement District Administration. And I do have one speaker on that, but only if we have questions. Did anybody have, anybody want to report on that? She pulled it only if she, only if there were questions.
Well, I have comments to make on this item, so I would like to hear the speaker.
Okay. So would you like a report on this item, then?
Yes.
Okay. Could I make a small, a short report, and then we'll go to discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am Kevin Hamm. I'm Director of Economic Development, and with me is Rachel Bell. She's a management analyst in our office, and she'll be giving the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. In January 2013, the city received the Central Vista Business Improvement District, CVBID, Advisory Board's annual report, which proposed no boundary zone or assessment modifications for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. On March 26th, the city council confirmed the annual report and levied the assessment for the 2013-14 fiscal year. In order to disperse funds collected by the city directly to the Vista Village Business Association, the VVBA, for implementation of the CVBID, an agreement for administration of the CVBID needs to be executed between the city and the VVBA. Per the agreement, the city will provide a contribution of $40,000 at the beginning of the fiscal year, in addition to any collected CVBID funds. Upon receipt, additional assessments will be distributed to the VVBA quarterly, pending receipt of the required reports as outlined in the agreement. At the end of the fiscal year, the city will require an agreed-upon procedures review to be completed before final dispersment of collected assessments. During the 2012-13 fiscal year, CVBID funds were used to fund improvements and activities within the district. A summary of VVBA accomplishments is listed in Exhibit 4. Excuse me. Several members from the VVBA, as well as the CVBID Advisory Board Chair, Maureen Barick, are available to answer any questions, as well as staff. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, council member Cody? Council member Campbell? Only if there are questions.
I have some concerns on allocating the $40,000 at this time. You know, I reviewed the history of this organization, and under their former director, I have nothing against the current director that they just hired, the organization seemed to be moving in the right direction. However, now those concerns come back to light with the composition of the board for the VVBA. I feel that this money, the $40,000 of city's money, of your tax dollars, would be better spent for economic development within the city, within our city's own economic development department, or to another organization, such as the Chamber of Commerce within the city, that has a proven track record for economic development within our city and good fiscal use of those dollars. So I know that this item will pass this council tonight, I'm pretty certain of it, but I would ask that this council form a committee composed of at least two council members to evaluate and follow the financial contribution that the city makes to the VVBA in conjunction with staff, so that we can ensure that proper oversight and proper protection of our tax dollars is provided for this contribution to the VVBA at this time. So I would make a motion that we approve and adopt this item with the provision that the council provide a committee oversight moving forward in conjunction with staff, so that we have a better understanding next year when this item comes up for approval and working with the economic development department. So with that, I would make the motion to adopt this item with that provision included.
Council member Coles?
Maybe I could inquire, what would that committee, how would that committee function? What would their, what would their process be?
Sure. If I may ask the city attorney a brief question, I didn't have time to ask you this previously, but my understanding would be that it is possible, under the open meeting laws, that the council could form a committee composed of two council members to work with staff on this issue. Is that a correct assumption, or?
The council can appoint subcommittees really on any issue. In the context of the Brown Act, there are two rules to be followed, however, one of which is an ad hoc subcommittee, which is usually created, which is created for a temporary, short-term, limited purpose, is not a Brown Act subcommittee. A standing subcommittee, which is one that is appointed for typically a longer duration, such as a year, is a Brown Act subcommittee, and any meetings of that subcommittee have to be subject to the Brown Act. As long as, well, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. So what I'm proposing would be the ad hoc committee, specifically for less than a year. What I'd like to see is work with staff and work with the VVBA to determine the best utilization of this money, to look at the other funding sources through the CVBID monies that come in. And since we're still running a structural deficit within the city, I'd like to, you know, evaluate other options for that and making sure that the $40,000 is appropriately spent. I think that, you know, it's a fair request in terms of, we're still running quite a substantial structural deficit within the city, and creating an ad hoc committee of the council to work with the economic development and the city manager's office to evaluate and look at potential options moving forward for the next allocation of the CVBID funds next year. If we determine that this is the best use of those funds, then that's what, you know, we could evaluate and determine and bring back moving forward. If there is a glaring second option, that's a better option, that's something that we could bring back to the council moving forward in the future. So that's the suggestion and proposal that I'm bringing forward at this time.
Councilor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I guess a couple of years ago, I shared Councilman Campbell's concerns as well, because there was definitely some issues with the organization. I think for the past two years, though, they've definitely made some improvements. Our downtown has benefited from that. I've been to several of their events, well, you know, attended, and I think that they are driving business to our downtown. I guess I want some clarification, because I remember that at one time we had, I believe the mayor on as a liaison, we had a staff member on as a liaison, then we changed that to an actual committee that we established to monitor the $40,000 that we were giving them, plus the $60,000, nearly $100,000 that we were, I think it was $95,000 in the end that we were giving them. So could you kind of update me on where we are with that group? Because I don't really believe in just continuing to develop more and more groups to monitor $40,000.
Yes. Staff liaisons to the organization, the board, that's Rachel Bell. We also have Councilman Campbell. He also is the liaison to the board. We also have the Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board, where the council appoints four individuals and the VVBA recommends three to you from their board that you appoint. Seven-member oversight board. They just met today, as a matter of fact, and they go through the financials of the organization, as well as their work plan, line by line, to make sure everything's being spent properly. Today, Maureen Barick is the chair of that group. She's here today. She might be able to talk a little bit about that meeting. But the board meeting was great. They had lots of questions, asked the staff to clarify some things. And we're going to sit down as staff, the VVBA, and the CVBID Advisory Board in the next month to make sure it's even more on track with the production of information and clarity in the documents.
Okay. With that information, do you still think we need to set up a completely additional committee?
What I would suggest, and what I made in the original comment, was that it wouldn't be an entirely separate committee working independently, but would be designed to work as the council's sort of ad hoc committee to work with staff, the CVBID Advisory Board, and the VVBA, to examine the issue from a more comprehensive perspective in terms of downtown economic development with this $40,000 and the CVBID process in general. So I think that the process in place now is a good one, but could be made better with additional council involvement through an ad hoc committee for providing oversight to those funds.
Council member Rigby?
Thank you. Sorry, thank you. I was just wondering if it's appropriate to ask Councilman Campbell particularly some of the concerns he has, because I'm, I too have been involved with the VVBA as an outside person, attending events and helping with a couple of events. And I thought they were doing a great job with their task and what their mission is, and their events are very well attended, and they seem to get a lot of positive feedback, and they are bringing some more community interest into Vista. So I thought that they've been doing a very good job, and I wasn't sure if it's appropriate to ask you what some of your concerns are.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, councilor calls.
I believe the motion on the floor is to adopt this item with the addition of the two-member ad hoc committee. Before we act on that, do we have two council members that would be, that would volunteer to serve on that committee? I think we should know that before we adopt something that we might not get any takers for.
Well, and maybe I could say something also, because I was involved with the VVBA for many years, and I always thought that they have done a great job downtown. Like, the chamber is focused more on the broader Vista, where the VVBA is focused on the downtown area. And just to take from our information that we have here, I was just, some of their funds were used for, and they were quality events, the rod run, smoking classic barbecue competition, the Winterfest tree lighting, North County St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Strawberry Festival, which I believe was just one of the most successful ones they've ever had. People were everywhere downtown. The Taste of Vista, which is actually coming up pretty soon, here in June. And so they do all of these downtown events, and they're focused more on the downtown than what the chamber would be. So I think they do a great job, and everything is well attended, so I don't know, they already have oversight of the CVBID board, and we have people from our city involved in, economic development involved in it, so I don't know what more possibly we could do. So Maureen Barick would like to speak.
Hello, everybody. This is my first time talking up here, so I'm a little nervous. I'm the chairman of the CVBID Advisory Board. I want to let all of you know that we take it very seriously. It's been, it's, we're all volunteers, and we've spent hours on this, and particularly recently. We reviewed our contract with the city, line by line. We have some future things we're going to go through. I would like to invite you, Councilmember Campbell, to come to one of our meetings and start there. That would give you a firsthand accounting on what we're doing. The other thing is, we do have a work plan with the VVBA. We went through that line by line today. Some of those wonderful things you mentioned, Mayor Ritter, are actually not coming from the CVBID money. So there are certain appropriations that we are allowed to use CVBID money for, and there are some that we're not allowed. So we make sure to separate those. And for instance, we do have $10,000 of the $40,000 is appropriated for facade improvement downtown. And I could go over the rest, I have gobs of paperwork I've been going through. So let me just give you a few examples. We have $1,000 in the budget for a retreat for the VVBA, of which we've spent $800 this year so far. That's so that we can send our executive director and our president to the California Council of Main Streets and do things, things like that, or to have, like recently, we had a retreat here at the city where we come in and we learn how to goal plan and things like that. And you do, you do have to really keep in mind, these are business people downtown that love their downtown. They want to see it thrive. People like me, I'm involved because Vista has given me a living for 35 years. So this is my time in life to give back to Vista. So I volunteer my time. It's like any group, there's a little politicalness going on, there's opinions, there's strong personalities, but all in all, we all have the same thing in our heart. So.
Thank you.
And we do have a handle on it. Definitely, we're taking it very seriously, and you, you know, we're all involved. Also, our president's here, is that what he's called, Mario, President? Our president's here, our executive director's here, there's another staff member here. So we're all very concerned that our relationship with you is good, and we proceed for the city of Vista.
Do you have questions? I have, we have one more speaker. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, you have one more speaker?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, no. I don't have any more questions. I think you guys have been doing a great job.
Okay, sorry, I'm a little shaky. This is a new thing. Okay, Maureen, you're good. You did a good job. Cliff Kaiser, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I would like to amplify what Mr. Hamm talked about, this new advisory board. And Mr. Campbell, you might not be that intimate with it, since you're fairly new on the council here. It was only formed, I think, two years ago, and it was formed as a result of a lot of discussion, and there were several options put on the table, is what's a better way to provide oversight to the VVBA. I was in favor of that particular model, but the others probably would have worked a little bit as well. And I think that it's probably a good idea to let them continue to develop themselves. You're also aware that you've invested significantly in the Chamber of Commerce and continue to invest in the Chamber of Commerce, and that investment has paid off, and now that's a big, strong organization that's growing and doing better. And I think the VVBA is probably headed on the right track as well. I attend some of their meetings. And if you don't have debate, and you don't have different personalities on the board, you're not going to get all sides of the issue. personalities on the board, you're not going to get all sides of the issue. So if that's happening on the board, I think that's all the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. And I would like to offer a substitute motion, and just to accept C-14 as it stands.
The other one, the other one died, I think, right? We didn't have a second.
No? Oh, okay. Well, then I'll offer.
So make your motion.
I'll offer a motion to pass C-14.
I'll second it.
Cast your votes, please. Motion passes with one abstention. Okay. Moving on here. The next item is, we're moving into our discussion items. And the first item is D-1. It's a ban on smoking outdoor dining areas and patios.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager. With me tonight is Cheryl Mass, the management analyst in our office, and she'll be providing the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Staff was requested by Councilman Campbell to place an item on the agenda for discussion of a ban on smoking in outdoor dining and patio areas. Staff contacted the seven cities in San Diego County that have adopted ordinances prohibiting smoking in outdoor dining areas. Those cities include Carlsbad, Chula Vista, Del Mar, Alcoa, Encinitas, National City, and Solana Beach. Each city's ordinance is slightly different, some covering private in addition to public spaces, with Alcoa including multi-unit residential common areas. While every city reported that they did not receive significant public opposition, each city handled outreach and enforcement uniquely. The city attorney's office reviewed Councilman Campbell's sample ordinance in comparison with our existing municipal code section, and found that Councilman Campbell's would expand the prohibition of smoking in external areas. However, our existing ordinance more strongly prohibits smoking inside buildings. The city attorney's full findings are provided in Exhibit 3. In the event a majority of the city council decides tonight to move forward with a ban on smoking in outdoor dining areas, staff requests direction on how to move forward. Three options were detailed in the staff report, including, one, adopt the sample ordinance provided by Councilman Campbell; two, modify the existing municipal code, Section 8.12, to expand a prohibition on smoking in outdoor dining areas and patios, including bars; or, three, direct staff to conduct more research and outreach to affected restaurants and bars, and schedule the item at a future meeting. This concludes staff's presentation.
I have eighteen speakers on the, I, you want to hear the speakers first?
Sure. Should we take a brief recess to review the amendment to the proposed ordinance that I brought forward for the council to review at this time?
Is that okay with the rest of the council? You want to take a brief recess of five minutes to read that over?
Is this going to be part of the?
This would be part of Option 1. There was a slight miscommunication with staff on my part as well, that the original ordinance, the amendment proposed, did not take into consideration the existing indoor portion of 8.12. This would address that issue for section, for Option 1, and would accomplish the concerns of the city attorney in regards to the indoor area smoking restrictions that are currently in effect, and incorporate those into this.
It's a little late.
Otherwise, no.
I, I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay, Councilmember Coles?
Is it the intent to have this as a substitute replacement for what you have in the packet already?
That's correct.
And how, how long is that? How many pages is that?
The sections that were amended primarily.
The public hasn't had a chance to review it either, though.
Well, just to cut to the chase, you, I think you know that I support this, this effort to curtail or restrict the smoking in, in the dining areas and the restaurants. But the process of doing that is more complicated than a concept. And, and I'm not, I won't be able to vote on an item that hasn't received the full review of staff with their comments, and as well as the attorney, and, you know, given me more than a couple of minutes to, to read through it. I, I want a good enforceable policy, and I don't want to do that in a hurried fashion, because I want it to be something that can be supported, hopefully by the rest of the council, and then have the ability to be upheld in the future. So I'm not sure how we could achieve that with one of your known allies on this issue. I'm uncomfortable with being able to vote on something that I'm just now getting.
Councilmember Rigby.
I agree. I think the public, as well as, we need more than five minutes to review this and incorporate it. I think staff needs time to look at it. And it's important that the public be able to look at what we would be voting on, and I'm not even sure if that's allowable to vote on something that hasn't been posted and the public hasn't seen yet. So I'm not comfortable with that either.
Councilor Aguilera.
I agree.
So do you want, but to, not, we have eighteen speakers. Do you want to send them out? Do you want to postpone this meeting until a later meeting? Or do you want to hear the speakers?
May I suggest something in that regard, since I'm the one who kind of threw, threw water on the, the alternate item to be voted on? I think we've got people here with, with, that have shown up, they've prepared what they want to say, and I think we need to hear that as a council, even if we don't take action tonight. I, I want to hear, I, I want to, to the council to hear some of the concerns that I think are very real, that we need to be apprised of as we move forward in this. And I, like I said before, this is something, to me, that is so important, that it be done correctly, and done in a fashion that we can generate the support to have it done properly. So I would like to hear from the speakers, because they're here.
I agree.
Can I make a brief comment? I, I would ask that we hear from the speakers in the audience, and, but I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor that we postpone a vote on this particular item, and would request that, to address Councilmember Coles' concerns, if he would second this motion, to send this item back for review of the city attorney and the city manager's office, and then bring that back at our next meeting, and see if that addresses the concerns of the city attorney's office. But in the interim, that we still allow the public that has shown up to address their concerns on this issue to speak.
I'm good with that also.
Does that need to be a second? Well, part of that is, I'm not necessarily agreeing to bring this back intact. I would like some council feedback after we hear the speakers, that might garner support to pass an ordinance that, that the council can do. And so some of the items in, in what you have proposed, I would be open to maybe modifying them to gain support of the council, to have an ordinance that has some teeth in it, that's enforceable, and that, that provides the, the dining-smoking issue resolution that we're, that I'm seeking. So does it need a second to that? So did you make a motion to postpone a vote on this?
I don't understand why we have to make a motion. Just, we're deferring the item, right?
It's, my interpretation of the discussion is that we're going to proceed to hear from the folks in the public who've asked to speak, and I think at the conclusion of that, then it would be appropriate to make a motion to either defer or instruct staff on what elements were to look for in the ordinance, how you, how you want us to proceed.
Okay. That's, that's good.
Okay. So we'll start with the speakers. First, and please allow three minutes, and because we have eighteen speakers, try and keep to your time. First is Nancy Logan, followed by Christina Griffin.
Good evening, Council. I'm Nancy Logan, representing the North Coastal Council PTA, which recognizes that healthy and pleasant outdoor activities for adults and children are compromised by secondhand smoke. Children are especially vulnerable because they breathe in more air than adults, as their lungs are still developing. They're at a greater risk of the effects of secondhand smoke, since asthma is the number one reason children enter emergency rooms in San Diego County. There's no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke. It's important to remember that secondhand smoke was classified as a toxic air contaminant in the same category as asbestos, cyanide, and arsenic. Every day, three thousand kids start smoking. Ninety percent of adult smokers began before they were eighteen. Think how important it is that children and youth experience smoke-free behaviors and see adults model healthy choices by not smoking in restaurants. I encourage the city council members to take actions that reduce children's exposure to secondhand smoke by extending the smoke-free experience to the outdoor patios where families like to dine. Smoke-free air is the right of all people, but especially children who are at the mercy of decisions that adults make that affect their quality of life. Thank you very much.
Christina Griffin, followed by Carrie Moya. No, Christina's not here. So then Carrie Moya, followed by Mary Donahue.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Carrie Moya, and I am a prevention specialist with Vista Community Clinic. I was responsible for conducting the research regarding how many restaurants were located in Vista, California. From my research, I found that there were two hundred and eight restaurants located in the city of Vista. Of these two hundred and eight restaurants, eighty-seven had some type of outdoor dining patio. Twenty-one restaurants already had a voluntary smoke-free policy in place, and asked dining patrons to not smoke on their outdoor dining patios. A coworker and I visited almost every single one of the eighty-seven restaurants with outdoor dining patios, and distributed packets, which included a cover sheet that discussed the upcoming ordinance, and asked restaurant owners, managers, and staff to email or call city council with their feedback or input regarding smoke-free outdoor dining patios. The restaurants were visited and made aware of this proposed ordinance, and asked to provide their feedback before today's city council meeting took place. The city of Vista has an extensive amount of restaurants, with almost half of these restaurants having some type of outdoor dining patio for patrons to eat on. Hopefully, the restaurants took the opportunity to voice their opinions and provide feedback for you, you to consider when making your decision. Thank you.
Mary Donahue, followed by Erin, is it, Bizek?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am a volunteer for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I live and work in Vista. The American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network supports a comprehensive, smoke-free dining ordinance. Shouldn't the best seat in the house be smoke-free? Eighty-six point nine percent of Californians don't smoke. Thirteen thousand Californians die from lung cancer each year, and many of them have not, never smoked. Levels of secondhand smoke exposure outdoors can reach levels obtained indoors, depending on direction and amount of wind and number of proximity of smokers. Smoke-free restaurants cut down employees' exposure to secondhand smoke, but not protected, but has not protected all employees from patrons smoking on patios. Shouldn't everyone be protected? A smoke-free, comprehensive, outdoor dining ordinance will protect, protect them. I have here one hundred and eighty-three postcards from Vista residents in support of the ordinance. Thank you.
Erin Bizek, followed by Brett Schatzenbach.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, City Councilmembers. My name is Erin Bizek. I'm the president of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition. We are a nonprofit organization based right here in the city of Vista, and our mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista. And the way we do this is through community action, education, support, and collaboration. I'd just like to see a show of hands the people who are here to support smoke-free outdoor dining, including the people with the stickers on, hopefully. So we've been doing this in this community for over twenty years, and very successfully. And we've been doing it successfully because we partnered with your, with your city council and the other city councils in the area to promote public health and to promote public safety. Some examples of that in the past have been smoke-free parks here in the city of Vista, as well as a tobacco retail licensing ordinance that is widely considered a model for the state of California. So on behalf of North Coastal Prevention Coalition, I would just like to be here today to encourage you to pass a smoke-free outdoor dining ordinance, to join one hundred and eleven other cities in the state of California, in doing so, and in doing, and passing one that has the strongest language possible. As always, we are available to you, to the citizens of the city of Vista, as a resource for information about these issues. Feel free to contact myself or any other people here if you have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brett Schatzenbach, followed by Linda Barbour.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Brett Schatzenbach. I'm the CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to represent the Board of Directors. The board is opposed to this ban on smoking in outdoor patios, specifically because of the impact it would have on the businesses that do cater to that clientele, specifically those who have a nightlife type of atmosphere, many of which are right in our downtown. And we would like to just recommend, if the council does move forward with some form of a ban, that you would look to Option 3, that the staff brought forward, and actually engage in a discussion with these restaurants and these owners, and see if there is some kind of hybrid versus just a across-the-board ban, some kind of hybrid that might work for everybody, or at least to a certain degree, work for everybody. In my discussions with the different restaurants downtown that specifically do have patios and nightlife, one of them, who shall remain nameless, did bring up the fact that they didn't really care if the ban was passed or not, because they had no intention of doing anything about it, and if their patrons smoked late in the evening, they weren't going to tell them to stop. And so it was just kind of one of, another one of these unenforceable type of, you know, laws that could get put on the books. And so that's something else to consider. How would it be enforced? Who would be enforcing it? Is it just going to be complaint-driven? You know, those kinds of things, because most of the patrons who do come in and enjoy smoking in outdoor patios are late in the evening, you know, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, things like this, and, and who's going to be out enforcing it? So it's something else to consider as you look at crafting something, if you go this route. So please, if you do continue with this, engage in a dialogue with these restaurants and see if there's something that can't be worked out, that has minimal negative impact on their business, but still achieves some of the goals that you're seeking to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Barbour, followed by Chuck Rabel.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Ritter, and Councilmembers, for hearing this issue. I'm with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and on our behalf, I want to thank you all for all of the support you've given to our Relay for Life and our events in your community. And we'd like to ask you to strongly support a comprehensive ordinance. The U.S. Surgeon General, as has been said before, there's no safe level of exposure. And when we passed laws, the indoor smoking laws, there were lots of concerns from business about it was going to hurt their business, and they were afraid of all that. And that was found to be completely not true. It did not happen, and I think that those kind of concerns are ones that can be addressed. Many businesses were concerned about that at the time. And when the bill passed, there really just was not the problem that anybody considered. In fact, there are so many people who don't smoke, they were very happy to have a smoke-free dining area. And many workers who appreciate the benefit of that law can't, you know, when they, when they're working on indoor area, don't get that benefit if they have to work in an outdoor area. So for the benefit of workers who do work in those outdoor dining areas, you will be protecting them by passing a comprehensive ordinance. I also have a letter from a local business owner and oncologist who is urging you to pass a strong, comprehensive ordinance, and I'll leave that with the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Rabel? Chuck Rabel, followed by Gina Knutson.
First, a question, if I might. Ally, if you've got the answer, fine. If not, the tobacco license tax that went into effect a couple of years ago, what's been the result of that?
The tobacco retailer program?
Yeah, exactly.
What do you mean by the result? What have we?
Well, supposedly, the monies were supposed to go to the sheriff's department to do sting operations if they would sell it.
Sure, they do conduct minor decoy operations a couple of times a year, sending minors into establishments to see if they can get the establishment to sell them a tobacco-related product or kind of a shoulder tap outside with people over 18 going in. And that's where the funds are generally spent.
What's the result?
I don't have the results.
Okay, thank you.
I think the result is, I think, two months ago, there were violations of Vista businesses. I think there was two of them that were found. You're talking about the tobacco specifically?
Two out of everybody that sells tobacco in Vista.
Two out of the number of businesses that were visited.
All right. That's meaningless data. Thank you. If you look on page two, we got this junior high thing. All these other cities do it, we have to do it too. And the anecdotal evidence that 20 restaurants out of the 82 visited in Vista have voluntarily no smoking. My problem is, this is not the America that I grew up in. We didn't have this kind of social engineering, and I'd like to see the marketplace do its work. If the owners want smoking, so be it. It's their call, and the marketplace will figure this thing out. I don't like the city getting involved. And maybe I'll go have a cigarette.
Chuck. Gina Knutson, followed by Nanette Stam.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council members. I just wanted to respond to the previous speaker about the results of the tobacco stings. It is one of the strongest ordinances in the state of California. Like the city manager just mentioned, there was only two stores that were found in violation. So again, it proves that this type of ordinance does work. It does prevent youth from getting cigarettes at local retailers. And as we know, if kids start smoking before the age of 18, they are more likely to continue on to be more lifelong smokers, which costs society and medical costs and other costs as well. So just to answer that question. My name is Gina Knutson. I'm the program manager at Vista Community Clinic, and I've been doing this for about seven years. I have many personal reasons for why I work on this particular issue. I'm a cancer survivor of 15 years. My mom has asthma. About six members of my dad's side of the family died from cancer, and I have a current cousin that has lung cancer that has spread to his brain. So to me, it's very emotional. But let me move on to what I was going to talk about before my three minutes are up. We did do observations here in the city of Vista at all restaurants, which there's about 208. This was done back in 2010. Eighty-seven, again, one of the speakers here told about the number of restaurants that are here in the city. What we found out is that 30% of those that were smoking out on patios were of high school age, so a smoke-free policy could help decrease youth smoking rates. Also, a large amount of litter was found observed at the restaurants, so a smoke-free policy could reduce environmental hazard, but it could also reduce a potential fire hazard. We also conducted a public opinion poll. Again, this was back in 2009. We did about 200 of Vista residents. Fifty-four percent reported that they have eaten in an outdoor dining area one to five times in the last month. Sixty-three percent reported that they had been bothered by secondhand smoke when eating outside in a restaurant. Sixty-five percent, or nearly two-thirds, reported that they would visit a restaurant more often if it had a smoke-free policy. And finally, 78% or nearly 80% reported a person should not be allowed to smoke in the outdoor dining area of a restaurant. So that is some public opinion poll information that we had from the last couple of years. In the last year, I don't have very much time, we conducted a poll across North County. It was about 1,600 residents, and overall, about 86% of the respondents agreed that cities should have laws that prohibit smoking on outdoor dining patios in sidewalk cafes, including 90% of smokers and 50% of smokers, which was really surprising. So in conclusion, I hope that you would consider this when you look and work on the policy. Thank you very much. Oh, one more thing. We have petitions, we have signatures that people signed in Vista. We have 585 signatures that people signed supporting this, and I'll give this to the city clerk. Thank you.
Nanette Stam, followed by Chuck or Marilyn Abeta.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Nanette Stam, and I'm speaking tonight as a public health professional, a parent, and a Vista resident. And real quickly, back on the tobacco retail licensing, I want to clarify that before this ordinance was passed, we had nearly 40% sales to youth, and now we have 0.1%. So that is clear indication that this ordinance is effective in preventing youth from getting tobacco. And on to the current topic. I am the director of the Health and Motion Center at the Vista Community Clinic, and our mission is to provide quality healthcare and health education to the community, focusing on those that face economic, social, and cultural barriers. And many of our patients are low-income families, and these are the ones that where smoking rates and exposure to secondhand smoke are disproportionately high and have a negative impact on their health and well-being, especially young children and infants. Those, young children and infants who are exposed to secondhand smoke experience increased rates of asthma, respiratory infections, and ear infections, as well as increased risk of sudden infant deaf syndrome or SIDS. And at Vista Community Clinic, upper respiratory infections and ear infections continue to be the top 20 diagnoses for pediatric patients. Countywide, asthma is the number one reason that children enter hospital emergency rooms. I'm a parent of two young children. The youngest has been to the emergency room twice in the past six months due to asthma, the last one just yesterday. So I know firsthand the toll asthma and upper respiratory infections can have on young children and their families. And although secondhand smoke exposure was not the culprit, to my knowledge, for my child's asthma attacks, it is for many children. Adoption of smoke-free outdoor dining is a small and rather simple step that cities can take to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, a step that I believe will positively impact the health and well-being of all Vista residents, including those most vulnerable to secondhand smoke exposure, such as children. As you know, eight cities in San Diego County have already adopted smoke-free outdoor dining ordinances. I urge you to join their ranks and support a strong, comprehensive, smoke-free outdoor dining ordinance in the city of Vista. I truly believe that only positive results will come from it, both in economic terms with more patrons visiting Vista restaurants that have outdoor dining, as well as in health terms with less Vista residents experiencing illness due to secondhand smoke exposure. Thank you for your time.
Chuck or Marilyn Abeta, followed by Carissa Murdock.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chuck Abeta. My mom, Marilyn. And the reason that we're here is, well, I think, first of all, thank the young lady who delivered this package we received this afternoon, you know, so we're really not prepared. I also feel that I can relate to the gentleman who interviewed people who have businesses that rely on evening and nightlife and patio activity that way. We, on the other hand, happen to be the opposite of that. Our business depends on morning business. And, you know, most of you probably aren't smokers. Most of my family are not smokers. We've had our incidences in the family with people with health problems regarding various I live in a non-smoking house. My patio, however, is not a non-smoking patio. My guests are made to feel welcome. My mom, her home is a non-smoking home. Her outdoor area, you know, her guests are welcome. We are considerate people. We have a patio. I like what somebody said about the hybrid version. I think it was the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce said something to the effect of something that could compromise and maybe make everybody happy. You know, my vision for our little establishment on Pepper Tree Corner is that we have maybe a corner or something removed from where the majority of people sit. And it's not that we have that much outside seating area. You know, I had to smile when I saw that, you know, that smoking is not a protected activity under the U.S. Constitution. You know, what ran through my head was, I don't think our founding fathers would have wasted any part of our Constitution on whether or not people are entitled to smoke. I do agree that we need to be considerate of those who do not, and, you know, if there's some kind of a compromise, we have very few people that smoke on our patio, but we don't want to alienate one of them. Mom, would you like to say something?
No, we just have maybe just a few, but just those few people that have been coming around for years to tell them that, "I'm sorry, right now you can't smoke anymore." That's what I'm thinking about, you know? And then they would have to find someplace else to have their donuts in the morning. And I, but I like, we talked over, if we could figure out a spot on our patio, which is not that big, where somebody can go off and be by, you know, another side. We have a homeless man that's been with us from day, almost day one, and he smokes, and he's way back in the corner, and he's pretty respectful of anybody that does smoke.
I'd also like to say that we would not allow underage kids, not to say that we're checking IDs, but we would not allow. My mom has 22 grandchildren, making me have 21 nieces and nephews. Three of them smoke. One of her children smoke.
I need you to wrap up, if you could.
Okay. Anyway, we would just like to think that we're not fixing something that's not broke. Thank you very much.
Councilor Aguilera has a question.
I have a question for you, real quick. Your patio, I mean, I've been by your place many times. I just, I've never sat on the patio. Is that private property, though? Is that your property?
It's included in our lease.
Yeah, okay. It's not in the public right of way?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carissa Murdock, followed by Deborah Kelly.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. I support the proposed ordinance by Councilmember Campbell that would create healthy outdoor dining areas and protect the health of restaurant employees and patrons. Survey after survey and poll after poll all indicate the same outcome. People want outdoor areas and places of employment smoke-free. There is no longer an argument about the health risks of smoking. After an exhaustive study, the California Air Resources Board declared secondhand smoke to be just as dangerous as the most deadly industrial pollutants, and that there is no safe level of exposure. The U.S. Surgeon General also said that no level is safe and that serious health risks arrive from mere momentary exposure. As an elected representative of Vista, it is your duty to enact measures such as this that clearly protect the public, most especially young children, from deadly secondhand smoke. I frequently try to support Vista restaurants, but as soon as I get near, I am assaulted by a cloud of secondhand smoke. Even after years of attempts to eat outside at many Vista restaurants, I am still unable to find a time when I can eat and breathe fresh air, untainted by noxious pollutants. If this ordinance passes, I am one of many Vista residents who would eat out much more frequently when I would not have to worry that my health is being put in jeopardy. You may hear from a few backwards-thinking businesses that enacting this measure will hurt business. This is simply a fallacy concocted in league with big tobacco and has no bearing in reality. No scientifically-based study has ever concluded that enacting a ban such as this will hurt business. In fact, they have shown just the opposite. Every legitimate marketing professional knows that when you improve the quality of dining and other outdoor experiences, business improves as well. Only a very small percentage of people still smoke, and the vast majority do not. Are smokers really going to drive to another city so they can smoke while eating? No. Will a Vista family with kids drive to another city, say Carlsbad, so they can have an enjoyable meal outdoors from deadly secondhand smoke? Absolutely. If you do not vote to approve this ordinance with all of the public health protections intact, you are voting against the will of the vast majority of Vista residents, and perhaps more importantly, for an elected official, the will of the voters. So listen to the indisputable science, the over 80% of Vistans that support this ordinance, and put aside the unfounded fictitious concerns of a small few who would rather us all have to breathe deadly poisons when we step outside just so they can line their pockets with more tainted money.
Could you wrap up, please?
Almost done. If nothing else, remember this: Smoking is not a right, but having access to clean air, both in open spaces and places of employment, is a right. So I ask you, please stand with the people of Vista and do what's right. Approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Deborah Kelly, followed by Lee Roytardi.
Yes, Deborah Kelly. I'm the regional director with the American Lung Association in California, and thanks to all of you for taking a really close look at this issue. Where we live can predict how long we live and how well we live. People who live in Vista are already benefiting from decisions of past city councils. You've heard about the smoke-free beaches, reduced tobacco sales to kids because of licensing of tobacco retailers. You haven't heard that you were the first city in the county to say that tobacco specialty stores like Cigarette Cheaper couldn't be located across the street from a high school? You may not know that you're the first city in the county to eliminate hookah venues, period. By taking the courageous action that you have and by putting the welfare and the health of the people in Vista first, you have made a real contribution to how long and how well people are going to live in your community. I'm going to skip a lot of the things that other people have said.
Thank you.
I don't think you'll mind. But I would like to bring up a few things that other people have talked about. First of all, you know, this really is a documented, clear and present danger. We know that exposure to outdoor secondhand smoke is toxic. What a lot of people don't know is that if you happen to be someone with heart disease or diabetes, an exposure of only 20 minutes can precipitate a fatal heart attack in you. You may never know that it was your exposure to that secondhand smoke outside of the donut shop that did that, but that can happen. Every time we have looked at all of these smoke-free provisions from airlines to the workplace, to restaurants, to bars, to parks, everyone is catastrophized, that they will never work, no one will comply, they cannot possibly be enforced, we will create a community of scofflaws. And in fact, that really hasn't happened. We have a lot of experience with this kind of ordinance. They really are self-enforcing. You let people know what the rules are. It's really important not to underestimate people who smoke. People who smoke will obey the rules. People who smoke understand that they can even benefit by being in places where smoking isn't allowed, because there will be less temptation for them to relapse if they're trying to quit. And they also know that it sets a better example for their kids. I also wanted to mention Oceanside because, Councilmember Aguilera, I think you happen to talk about this city, and I'm really concerned about what Oceanside did because I think it's going to be a big mistake. I think that they are going to create, they're going to go forward with an ordinance that is going to divide the restaurant community. It's going to make people feel like they don't have an even playing field. They're going to resent that. It's going to be very difficult for customers and restaurant owners and employees to understand. And if people don't understand the rules, then they don't comply with the rules, and it's going to be difficult to enforce. And most importantly, it will provide a little or no protection to the vast majority of people who work or patronize restaurants and bars and people who work or patronize restaurants and bars in Oceanside. So I, I would, oh, I'm done, okay. I'm just going to stop right now. Please, please do the right thing, please move forward with the strong ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Roytardi, followed by Carolyn Chatterster.
Hi, I'm Mayor Ritter, City Councilman Lee Roytardi. I run the Vista Village Pub. And I kind of have a unique situation. Most of my, a great amount of my business occurs after nine o'clock at night. And most of my clientele, probably 75% smoke in the evening. And they smoke on our patio and they enjoy it, and that's what they do. We make concessions during the meal periods and have the smokers on the outside of the patio, so the tables nearest the restaurant are smoke-free as much as they can be. And I just feel that people have the right to make their own choices. And if they don't want to come to my restaurant because we allow smoking, they don't. And if it affects my business, then I just have to make changes. But until that happens, I'd like to keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Chatterster, followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Tonight, I'm just speaking for myself, representing myself. I agree 100% with the smoking ban. And just briefly, would like to mention the health concerns, we all are well-known. Trash and litter in public areas is one of the biggest issues. People who smoke flick their cigarette butts out on the sidewalks and around tables and all. Other cities have accomplished smoking bans with no dire consequences. Their, their restaurants have continued to thrive and do more business in many cases, as has been mentioned. Other industries, other than restaurants, airlines is one that comes to mind, have done no smoking with, again, no dire consequences. One of the biggest problems that I see, and I think you should give serious, serious consideration to in crafting this ordinance, is the enforcement. There is no such thing as smoking police, and without teeth, the ordinance is worthless. So I, I don't unfortunately have a wise answer or a suggestion for that issue, but I, I just urge you to seriously, seriously look at the enforcement so that it, it works, whatever you pass works. I encourage you very, very strongly to please pass some ordinance that bans smoking in our cities, restaurants and patio areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Jackel, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening again. I'm Stephanie Jackel. 30 years ago, I'm glad to say, I stopped smoking. But to this day, I regret the smoke that I imposed on the people around me while I was smoking. I am very much in favor of an ordinance to ban smoking in, in the outdoor patios and restaurant areas. Other cities have had accomplished such an ordinance. I hope Vista will join these cities in a, a good, strong ordinance to allow our residents and visitors and to allow me to enjoy Vista without having to suffer other people's smoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser, followed by Erica Leary.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council. I, I fear that this is another step along the path to a nanny state, and this really shouldn't be the purview of the, the city council to impose their views on the rest of the society here. It's been clearly stated and I think understood that if people don't want to go to that restaurant because they allow smokers, they can. And if there was a, an overwhelming need for people to go and dine where there is no smoking, then they would insist that and not visit that restaurant until they had the opportunity to convince that owner that, "I don't want smoking," just like Lee Roy said. If his, if his customers overwhelmingly decide that they don't want to come there because they don't want to be bad to smoke, then he'll change his policy. I don't think that's something that you need to impose. I don't think this is a city concern. The Surgeon General may say all kinds of things, but the fact of the matter is that it's still a legal substance, that it's still legal to smoke, chew, or whatever else you want to do with that tobacco. And the studies that have been referenced in all the sickness and stuff, and I, and I've lost relatives, my father, to, to smoking, but the fact of the matter is, there, there's not conclusive evidence that secondhand smoke is going to kill somebody. Okay? And I just, sitting at my, sitting at my, uh, in the, sitting at the, right here, looking at the internet, looking at study after study, that one contradicts the other. So I don't think that's a good case. And for any business that may have been contacted by big tobacco, just so that tobacco could sell their, their product there at that store, I'd like to see that business because I don't think that's, I think there's just been a lot of statements here that have been very far-fetched in trying to create an argument that, you know, the city should impose their will on the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Leary is our last speaker.
I don't know if it's good being last, but I'm glad we'll be done soon. So thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Erica Leary. I'm the Program Manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, which is fiscally managed by Vista Community Clinic. My children go to school here in Vista Unified Schools, and my husband's a teacher at Rancho. I'd like to focus my comments on the relationship between planning, policy, public health, community engagement, and fostering healthy communities, and make a very quick plug for two North County workshops being sponsored by Sandag that the general public is encouraged to attend. One is this Thursday in Escondido from 6:00 to 8:00, and the other next Thursday in Oceanside, community rooms from 6:00 to 8:00. And Sandag has contracted with us to increase public engagement in developing the San Diego Forward Regional Plan 2050, which I know sounds like a really long time from now. And just as this one of many examples of how agencies are making comprehensive plans, and this will include not only transportation, but public health, the environment, and many other elements. Public agencies from the national level to locally, right here in Vista, are acknowledging that comprehensive and coordinated approaches are necessary to improve citizens' well-being. San Diego County Board of Supervisors has also embarked on a 10-year initiative to improve public health and wellness that they refer to as Live Well San Diego. And this was developed in large part around the fact that three behaviors, I mean, yes, three behaviors contribute to the top four diseases in our county, which account for over half of the deaths. Tobacco use is one of those three behaviors. And right here in the city of Vista, you updated your general plan in December of 2011. And the purpose, as defined, is to provide a vision for the city, for the city's preferred future, and to put in place the means of achieving this vision. And developing all of these plans at various levels takes significant time, research, money, outreach to citizens, and input from a wide variety of stakeholders. And they're designed to provide a blueprint for moving forward to create healthy and prosperous communities for everyone. The general public then often assumes and entrusts that public officials like yourselves will then do their part to carry out these plans. And Vista's general plan, it states opportunity number six, to address health concerns, and states that Vista has the opportunity to become a leader in establishing community health as a citywide priority. For the first time then, Vista also included a healthy Vista element in the general plan, and states in part that this was done because of an alarming increase in certain health risk factors over the last three decades. There's a new urgency to involve all levels of government in promoting improved public health. The healthy Vista element demonstrates the city's awareness of the role local governments can have in improving public health and promoting healthier residents by taking a leadership role in making community health and wellness priorities.
Are you wrapping up?
Yep. Just real quick, it also refers specifically to tobacco issues and includes the establishment of smoke-free outdoor dining policies. Now Vista's general plan is very comprehensive. A lot of it will take a lot of time, resources, and money to be implemented, but what you have before you tonight can be implemented right away with no money involved. You'll join over 100 cities in California in protecting residents from the harms of secondhand smoke and keep Vista as a leader in establishing community health as a citywide priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are the last of our speakers. So where are we? Six more speakers? Well, are we gonna, are we gonna, are we going to go forward with this, or are we going to postpone this? I guess, I, I have Councilmember Campbell, followed by Councilmember Coles, followed by Councilmember Aguilera.
Well, I'll start with saying that it, it seems that we'll postpone this item to a future meeting. But I wanted to address some of the concerns that members of the audience brought forward. And address first off, the one comment that elicited some, some chuckles from the audience, which is, first off, it's not disputable that secondhand smoke isn't harmful. It's been proven, time in and time out, with every scientifically valid study done, secondhand smoke is deadly. Secondhand smoke, just so you know, contains 7,000 chemicals that have been identified, 250 of which are harmful, and 69 of which are cancer-causing. So you can't tell me that that's not harmful, because it is. Now, it brings us to why I wanted this measure brought forward tonight. We have an opportunity in Vista to join a growing number of cities in California that are doing the right thing for public health. They're protecting those that don't have a say. So let me give you an example. A family with two children goes to a restaurant. Do the children have a say that their parents took them to a restaurant that has secondhand, that has smoking on their patio, and they're being exposed to deadly toxic carcinogens? The answer is no. So whose responsibility is it to ensure that the public health is protected? It's us, the elected representatives of the people of Vista. And study after study and poll after poll have shown one thing: The vast majority, the supermajority of the population and the voters of California, San Diego County, and Vista support one thing: Adopting comprehensive policies to protect the residents of this city from secondhand smoke. I find it embarrassing that organizations within this city take an opposing view to adopting something that protects health. When the city of Carlsbad, you know, when we talk about economic improvement and wanting to revitalize this city and move us in the right direction for improving our local economy, where better to look than our local city of Carlsbad, which has a booming, thriving restaurant industry? Back late last year, I believe it was September, their council did the right thing, unanimously adopting a smoking ban at restaurants and other places of food service and service. Has business decreased in restaurants in Carlsbad on their outdoor patios because they can't smoke anymore? No. How many complaints have they had? The last I heard from city staff in Carlsbad, zero complaints after the ordinance went into effect. But even the mayor of Carlsbad in the North County Times reported that after the fact, they got compliments and thank yous from employees that work at restaurants that are no longer exposed to secondhand smoke. I've heard comments in the community, "Well, go get another job somewhere else if you don't want to be around secondhand smoke." Well, with that kind of argument, why don't we, you know, remove other employee protections as well? Why can't we smoke inside? Go find a job somewhere else. It's not right, and people know it. I think that the arguments that have been brought up, you have two sides. You have the side that I understand from a business perspective, it might, you think it's going to hurt your business. But in locations where this has been put in, it hasn't hurt the businesses. It hasn't hurt bars and restaurants that rely on evening business. Because, as one of the speakers said, do you really think that somebody's going to drive eight or nine miles away because they can no longer smoke on an outdoor dining patio? It's utter fallacy and a falsehood. But I tell you what will happen. If we continue to go down this road that we're going, and it looks like we're not going to implement an ordinance that the people of the city want, it's quite easy for a family to say, "You know, we can't go eat out at restaurants in Vista downtown this evening because it's inundated with secondhand smoke." But they can go to other cities like Carlsbad that have protections in place and go there. And that's what's going to happen. And studies have shown that in other cities that have joined cities that protect public health and those that don't. Here in Vista, we have an opportunity and that we have the obligation to protect the public health, enact this ordinance, and understand that it doesn't hurt business. Understand that it's not infringing on somebody's right, because what the vast majority of this community want is to enact this ordinance. You know, we've done surveys specifically within Vista, over 80% of those surveyed, irregardless of political party, want a comprehensive ban put in place. This is not a comprehensive ban. This ordinance that I'm proposing, and hopefully will bring back, is less restrictive than that. So I guess my point is, if we want to bring politics into it, if you want to do what Oceanside did, which is vote against the will of the community, if you want to stand with a very small, two or three vocal people out of 87 restaurants with patios, we heard from how many? Two. That tells me that they understand this is okay. Many restaurants want this in place because it's much easier for them to enforce and mention, "This is a city ordinance. This is the law," versus a voluntary policy. It's very difficult for a server at a restaurant to tell someone, "Oh, our policy is a voluntary, we don't want smoking here," because they know it's not a city ordinance. If you put a city ordinance in place, people will comply with it voluntarily, self-enforcing the ordinance, they'll self-comply. So the complaint that it's unenforceable, that we somehow are going to have to start having our sheriff's department come, become the smoking police, is utter nonsense. It's not going to happen. Look at the cities that have these ordinances in place, tell me what problems they have with it. And you'll find that they don't have problems, but they have great benefits from it. So I urge the council to look at this ordinance, not singling out any particular business or looking at any particular industry, but looking at it as a broader goal to improve public health in the city, to create economic opportunities so that we can become a city that people think about going to have an outdoor dining experience in, to come to our city so that they can spend money here, versus thinking about going to other cities that are taking a proactive approach to ensuring that they have a healthy dining opportunity. So that's all my comment for now. And I would like to, to just move this along, that we make a motion, that I would make a motion that we postpone voting on this matter until further research from staff can be completed with the amendment to the proposed ordinance, come back, I think, with the same options as we have now, in that we have three options to vote on in the future. So that I'd ask that the council accept this amendment that addresses the concerns that the city attorney originally had, comes back as an option to vote on, so it is in the agenda packet so that there's plenty of time for the public to review it and address any concerns. Have the proposed modifications to the municipal code with any suggestions that council would like to include in that tonight. And then a third option, of course, is if both of those options come back and you don't like it, we can ask staff to, for their modifications and review.
And so are you pulling the first one out that you put in here?
Well, I would ask that we not vote on any particular...
No, we're not going to, but the next time it comes back, are you pulling the first?
The, the version that's in there now currently, yes. And replacing it with this version.
Yeah, replace that, okay. Okay. Councilmember Aguilera, no, Councilmember Coles first.
Thank you. This, this is a different world than when I grew up, because we don't have DDT anymore. We don't have, we try to control the smog with catalytic converters, and we got seatbelts in cars, we have prohibitions on toxic waste, we have, there are a lot of things that have changed since I was a young person and took for, took as, as a matter of course, that you could, you know, pour your oil down the gutter and that sort of thing when you, you didn't think, education changed all that. And smoking is, is another thing that has dramatically changed in, in the years that I've grown up. When I first started teaching, the teacher's lounge was just a smoke den. I mean, you went in there and, and everybody, not everybody, but those that smoked lit up, and so everybody who was in there was, was smoking. That's no longer the case. When I was a principal up north in the early 80s, the state was having so much trouble with... the state was having so much trouble with students and smoking in bathrooms and so forth that they allowed designated smoking areas on campus. So we had... I had to go around and police the smoking areas at schools, if you can believe we allowed children to smoke. And a lot of that was before we really... The impact of the health hazards of smoking really became well-known and the outcomes experienced by families who lost people to lung cancer. Airplanes used to have a nonsmoking section of an airplane. Well, everybody in the airplane was essentially smoking. The first time I went to a restaurant that had a nonsmoking section, I was seated at a table and right here was a little partition that separated the smoking from the nonsmoking. And the guy sitting closer to me was smoking and my food was a smoke-filled food. Now, when it comes to the ordinance that we're trying to craft, my concern right now, the focus that I would like to see come back, would be with regard to restaurant and dining areas. I have friends that I've encouraged to come and frequent the restaurants here in Vista. They like to go to Carlsbad. They like to go to other places because I live in Shadow Ridge. They won't go to restaurants that have smoking anywhere around. I was... I've been at a couple of restaurants here that do allow smoking and I was inside because I didn't want to be in the smoking area. And lo and behold, I felt like I was in a smoke-filled restaurant because the doors were open, the wind drifted the smoke in, even to a restaurant next door to where the smoking was taking place. So my focus is on restaurant and outdoor dining, that that be a safe place for families and nonsmokers. And there... I don't think that restaurants are going to suffer for the smoking ban in that environment. We do monitor other health issues in restaurants, that the kitchens are clean and healthy and there are no substances that can harm the health of the people who eat there. There are many restrictions that fortunately we as a city have in place as well as the state and the federal government to protect the healthy environment of places that we consume food. So as we craft this, I, you know, and I don't... I think it's almost self-enforcing. Once you have the declared nonsmoking areas, it's easier for... Smokers respect that. I... That's been my experience wherever I am. And I don't expect that we're going to be able to deploy enforcement staff to see that it's in place. I just would like to see something that focuses on the smoking ban in and around the restaurant dining areas. And that's my feeling.
Councilwoman Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to state that I'm not a smoker, so... And I don't like smoking. And in fact, Leroy, I kind of avoid your place late at night. But I do go there earlier in the night sometimes or for lunch and that type of thing when people aren't usually smoking. So I make that choice. You know, I know you've put a lot of time into this, Councilman Campbell, and, you know, you have a lot in... You know, you want this to pass. And I understand that and I respect that. My main thing is, you know, you can't ask us to support something tonight, which I know we're going to defer it. But I just want to state my piece. I can't support something that I haven't read and try to digest in five minutes. So this is why I'm opposing... That's one of the reasons I'm opposing it. There's some other things that I didn't like in your original version. And I guess we can save that for... It probably doesn't matter at this point since we have a second version. But I think it was a little bit too restrictive for my likings. And I think, again, we're just becoming overbearing in some areas. So we'll discuss it in two weeks when I have time to actually read your proposal.
So I think if that's the end of the discussion, anybody else? So you made a motion, right?
I did, yes. So if there was a second to close this item and postpone it.
I'll second it.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second, and we'll put this off until the next meeting. Right? Okay. Please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, where are we now? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break while everybody's... The people are leaving and then we'll come right back.
Okay, if we could all ta- hello. Mercy, Mayan, mercy? If we can all take our seats, we can get started again.
Five minutes, right?
Can I go without him? I'm gonna go ahead and go. He can come back when he wants. Okay, so our next item, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Our next item, and Councilmember Campbell, I don't know where he is at the moment. He'll hear us and then he'll come back. Oh yeah, is that okay? Okay, okay. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is our draft fiscal year 2013-14 operating budget. And our city manager is going to give us our report on that.
Mayor and council?
I don't think you're on.
You turned everybody off? No, I'm on. Good evening, mayor and council. The purpose of this discussion item tonight is to review the operating budget, receive direction from you prior to presenting the final budget at the next council meeting on June 25th. The order for presenting the draft budget will be a brief overview of the summary pages, up to page 59, and I promise I will not review every page, I'll try to make it quick. And then we'll move on to the six major departments and find out if there's any questions from the city council. So in reviewing the draft 2013 budget, the agenda report that you have in front of you provides a broad overview of the totals for all the funds with a concentration on the general fund. So starting on page seven, as you see there, are the city council's top priorities which were established in March of 2012, and they are Paseo Santa Fe, public safety and the maintenance of public safety in its current state, business retention, recruitment and expansion, the structural deficit, working towards eliminating it, and improvement of roads and entryways to the city of Vista. And the priorities are being addressed in the current budget, and they'll continue to be addressed in the 1314 budget. Next, I'd like to review some of the summary pages, starting with page seven and eight of the agenda report, and the same pages can be found in the budget on pages 15 and six, 15 and 17, excuse me, within the budget document. And as we go through, if I skip over an area that you'd like more detail on, please stop me. So throughout the last decade, as all of you know, the city council, city councils, past councils and current council has been very steadfast and frugal in putting away the necessary funds and reserve to be able to provide for the many needs within the city. And specifically between 2008 and 2011, the city was forced to use a majority of the reserves and depleted them to be able to balance the budget. We do still have some reserves remaining, like the structural deficit reserve that the city council put forth last year, the PERS reserve, money for 800 megahertz, that'll be coming due in two years, risk management, vehicle maintenance reserves, as well as the emergency reserve that is currently at 12 percent, and this is our, what we consider our catastrophic reserve. So first off, the revenues, as you can see on this slide or on page seven, this is a general fund summary showing the historical data of revenues within the city. The total general fund revenues in 1314 are proposed to be $64,921,000, and the majority of the revenues come from the taxes that you see up front, property tax being the largest at 16.8 million, and finally, property taxes have stabilized within the city of Vista, which is a very good thing. We're projecting a increase of about 1.2 percent for the 1314 year, and I think this is, out of the last four years, this is the first year we're actually projecting an increase. The next item there is sales tax, and if you exclude Proposition L, sales tax accounts for $14.8 million, and sales tax has shown very, very solid increases over the last few years. In fact, we increased our budget, as you can see, from 13.2 million to 14.7. And part of that is because we've been very conservative in estimating our revenues in sales tax, and probably in 13, or in 1213, we were a bit too conservative. The next one is franchise fees, that's a part of the other tax category, and that accounts for 2.95 million. This is the revenue, has remained stable as well, and includes franchise fees from SDG&E, Edco for waste hauling, as well as from the cable providers. And in that category is also transient occupancy tax, which is at 970,000. This is a decrease from, of about 100,000 from the current fiscal year, and so as, the Hyatt Place is in business for almost a year now, so staff is continuing to monitor that, and we may make adjustments in the future if it's necessary, but that, that revenue source is 100,000 less than what we budgeted. The remaining revenues are made up of a variety sources, which you can see on your slide, just to name a couple, are the business license section, as well as the charges for services, which are fairly significant. Page 22 and 23 of the budget details the use of reserves and one-time monies, so as you can see on the slide, all the items have been reserved with specific designations. For example, there are money set aside for facility improvements and upkeep, park improvements, and Proposition L staffing that you see there at 1.2 million. And included in this section at $940,000 is one-time monies from the structural deficit reserve. And so if you go back a few years ago, we projected that we wouldn't have a reserve in 1314, however, the collapse of redevelopment, or the demise of redevelopment, changed our patterns and added about a little over a million dollars a year to our operating expenses in the general fund. So as a result, this proposed coming year in 1314 will still have a structural deficit of 940,000, however, in 1415, we expect that deficit to be removed altogether. The unused portions of the structural deficit reserve will be held for either future issues or possible redevelopment impacts. So on the next slide, you can see from this graph here that we're making progress. So five years ago, we had a deficit of approximately 12.3 million, and it's gone down to 10.2 to 9 million, three years, two years ago was 4 million, this year it's 2 million, and proposed for next fiscal year, it's under a million dollars, so our target is 1415 to eliminate the deficit altogether. Are there any questions on the city's revenues or the use of reserves before I move on to expenditures? Okay. So as it concerns expenditures, the chart is on page eight of your budget, or 17, 17 of your budget, or eight of your agenda report, excuse me. So we've been able to, from a staff perspective, keep the expense categories relatively stable in the current fiscal year. This is because individual departments, once again, have taken the steps necessary to be very conscientious about their budgets. The general fund expenditures for 1314 are projected at $64.7 million, and this includes transfers out to subsidies of non-general fund budgets, such as the Senior Nutrition Center, the Wave Water Park, Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, and the Housing Authority, as well as, it also accounts for reserve transfers. And this number also includes a transfer out to Proposition L Reserve, which is $6.5 million that you see on there. Excluding the Prop L funds and comparing the expenditures to revenues, the expenditures total 58.4 million, revenues total 57.4 million, and so, or, excuse me, 58.2 million versus 57.4 million, which is a difference of about $800,000. So the $940,000 deficit that I spoke of earlier, 803,000 will be to balance the budget, and 136,000 of that will be used to, as a ending fund balance of what we're projecting for the end of the 1314 year. As it regards staffing for the city, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that over the last five years, we've either unfunded or eliminated over 114 positions, and we've also eliminated eight contract positions through the San Diego Sheriff's Department. And although no reductions were planned for the current fiscal year, unfortunately, last month, we eliminated three positions that were primarily funded by redevelopment as a result of trying to right-size that department in the aftermath of what happened with the state. In this budget, it's also proposed that the furlough end, and what that means is for non-public safety employees, they'll have their hours restored, and the 5 percent reduction in salary will be eliminated. And as the economy continues to improve, there's been an increased demand for services that we've seen, and so there's two positions that were previously unfunded in the budget and that were requesting to be funded. The first is the economic, or, excuse me, the Development Service Center Technician, which works the permit counter, and the activity at the permit counter has increased such that it is needed. Currently, we only have one technician at the counter, and so we need to have backup as well as an additional technician. And the second is a rec leader four position that assists on the weekends and evening duties at the park and recreation sites. So those are two positions that were unfunded that we'd like to have funded, and in addition, we have four positions that are recommended for adjustment. The first is an office specialist position in the Facility Maintenance Department, currently works three-quarter time, we'd request to move that to full-time. Also, the Director of Finance and Director of Recreation and Community Services positions, promoting the incumbents who have held those positions for three to four years in the assistant-level position. And finally, the Assistant Human Resources Manager, a promotion of an incumbent due to increased duties. And lastly, with, we have one position that's being recommended, that, added to the CCI, which would be a construction inspector for the sewer program. And as you'll hear in the next budget presentation for the capital improvement program, 80 percent of that program is sewers, we're being very aggressive with the budget there, and so a construction inspector is necessary for the sewer program, which is paid for by the Vista and Buena Sanitation Funds. And as you see on your chart, some of the other department expenditures, they're all listed there, but I'll name a few. General government accounts for about 10 percent, public safety accounts for 64 percent, and community development accounts for 10 percent, with community services at 8.7 percent. I should mention that over the past five years, there have been consistent reduced expenditures, but there are also non-discretionary items that are not within our control typically, that have increased, which have eroded some of our reductions that we've made at the department levels, and these include law enforcement cost increases, pension costs, health care, and of course, the demise of redevelopment, which I mentioned. Are there any questions at this point about expenditures, before I briefly touch on Proposition L funding? Okay. So on page 52 of your budget is the annual accounting of the Prop L funds, and Prop L funds typically account for approximately 46 percent of the general sales tax revenues, and this percentage is less, as we've talked about before, due to the tax being a transaction and use tax. So I'm forecasting the Prop L revenues through the life of the half-cent sales tax, which is 2036-37. Staff's projecting a 2 percent conservative annual increase, and the forecast will be able to meet the bond payments through the life in 2036, as well as the 1.2 million that's currently set aside for fire operations, it'll be able to sustain that through 2019-20. And so as we go through in future years, if that percentage increase is higher than 2 percent, it may be able to sustain the fire operations later into the lifecycle of the bond. Are there any questions about revenues, expenditures, or Prop L? All right, well, just very briefly, just go through the six general areas of our budget, which starts at page 61. The general government section includes city council, city manager, human resources, city clerk, finance, and city attorney. Is there any questions on the general government section of the budget? Next is page 99, which begins the public safety section, and this includes law enforcement, school safety, as well as all of our fire services. As mentioned earlier, public safety is one of the high priorities for the city council, involves maintaining the current levels of public safety and law enforcement services within the city, and also, we've been very proactive in identifying grants to help offset any costs to the general fund in public safety areas. Are there any questions on public safety? We'll move right on to page 41, begins the community development section, and this includes code enforcement, traffic engineering, planning, engineering, community projects, the land development budget, building inspection, and the sewer programs, as well as stormwater. And one of your high priority goals within this section is to improve the roadways, as well as the entryways to the city, and so I think all of us have noticed over the past few years, the roads have had an increased attention from staff, and so I think all the residents and the community have benefited from that in coordination with the, primarily the engineering department, as well as public works. Are there any questions on community development? Zipping right along, page 195 begins the redevelopment section, and this includes economic development, redevelopment, the CDVG, and the housing programs. And there's two items in here that are part of your high priority goals, and that is the Paseo Santa Fe project, which is your highest priority. And as all of you know, we recently completed the detention basin, which allowed a lot of those properties then to be redeveloped along the South Santa Fe border, and we're currently working with Affirmed Housing to go forward with the Paseo Point project. And so if we can work through the state project, we'll likely see construction beginning first part of 2014 on that project. The other one is economic development, high priority for the council with retention and recruitment, and the Economic Development Department will continue recruiting new businesses into the city as part of this program. And I should say, in light of the loss of redevelopment funding, there have been significant reductions made, and so hopefully, we're at a point where we've right-sized that department. Are there any questions on redevelopment, or economic development, or housing? Okay, page 225 begins the public works session, and this includes the public works administration, graffiti abatement, park maintenance, parkways and medians, and all the gas tech work, including the maintenance of sewer and stormwater. Any questions about public works from the council? All right. Page 279 begins Recreation and Community Services, and this includes the rec programs, the Adobe, senior services, cultural arts, senior nutrition, and the Wave Water Park. And over the past two years, I'd just like to point out that we've reduced to only programs, recreational-type programs, that have a self-sufficiency level of about 70 percent or above, and this has helped reduce the subsidy to the general fund. And in addition, the council set the subsidy level for the areas at the Senior Nutrition Center of 270, 275,000, cultural arts at 200,000, the Wave Water Park at 450,000, and I'm happy to say that for cultural arts and the Wave Water Park, both of the estimates are coming in significantly less than your subsidy level. Any questions on these areas? All right. Lastly is page 319, which begins the Internal Services section, and this includes risk management, building and facility maintenance, fleet maintenance, and information technologies. And these services, we went through these budgets very closely, starting in September, actually, and made reductions where necessary, and reflected a decrease in overall accounts. Are there any questions about internal services? Okay. So before I finish my presentation, and I know you have a speaker on this item, I just wanted to thank city council for your support on the budget going through this process. And I'd like to acknowledge all of the city employees and the department directors that have put their efforts into this process, as well as specifically Dale Nielsen, Jeanette Ferris, and Ally Zimmerman for their hard work on this document. And I do want to give another special thanks to Laura Johnson sitting there for all of the hard work and dedication that she puts into the budget every year, and working with the departments to make it a much more thorough document, and so it's very much appreciated. And I mentioned earlier, we start this process, believe it or not, in September for the most part, and goes through, all the way through May, and so it's a, it's a very involved process with a lot of time being spent from the employees, as well as Laura herself, so thank you very much.
We have, we have one speaker on this, and that's Chuck Rabel.
Good evening and good night.
Is he on?
Hold on.
Just, there, try that.
Try now?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Budget, 376 pages. It's the most important document that you guys will look at, hopefully you do look at it. I'd like to see everybody get inside of it. It, it's where our money goes. I'm glad to hear that the 70 percent target is still in effect on the welfare and rec programs. I would like to see, I would like to have you consider going out in the marketplace and maybe contracting some things out, such as fleet maintenance. In my mind, the Chamber of Commerce will do as good a job, if not better, than VizTix, and the locations right, to bring people downtown instead of coming out here. One of my frustrations when I was deeply involved with the Chamber of Commerce is that we'd have these street events, okay, we got plenty of them now, and we couldn't get VizTix to come down to the Moonlight, or to the AVO, to sell the pedal tickets at the ticket window. And it just seems, especially when we get all these crowds from out of town, VizTix could be and should be downtown. I'll keep it brief. The other thing I'd like to see is a good analysis of what the cost is for the childcare services that we do. We've got a lot of local businesses, and we've got a lot of local nonprofits that could be doing, that are doing that function, and maybe it's time for the city to let the public and, and nonprofit sector take on whatever responsibilities you have. In order to do that, you need an operating statement. I'll let that pass. Thank you for your time, and I am out of here.
Well, good night.
If I could make a comment on the childcare, as he referred to it, it's our Tiny Tots program, and we bring in, it's, it's pretty much a match. It costs almost $100,000, and we spend out just under $100,000 at $97,000. So we're not losing money on it, we're not taking away from the daycare providers, it's a three-hour program within the city to give mothers or fathers a break and to have some stimulation for the children, and it's worked out well, and a lot of people have taken advantage of it.
Okay. So you don't need a motion on this, there's just information?
Discuss and provide direction, and we'll come back on June 25th with the final budget.
Any discussion on this? Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I kind of see this budget, even though it's moving forward, I also see some of the things that we've actually accomplished, and I'm really proud of the accomplishments of our city, the entire city, but particularly, community development, public works, I know you guys work hard out there, and I kind of give you guys a lot of work sometimes. But the roads look great, and I like the big signs out there, I think that says a lot to people that come to our community and know that, and know that it's, this is Vista that's improving here, and, but it also tells our citizens, the taxpayers, this is where their tax dollars are going, and I think that's really important for the taxpayer to know, that this is where their money's being spent, so I really like that, and I think you guys are doing a great job with the graffiti. I know it's, it's an impossible job to, to completely extinguish it, but keep up the hard work on that, and I'll keep calling it in. that, and I'll keep calling it in, and I know there's residents that call in as well. And also, want to point out that the rec department, I understand you guys run a real tight budget, you're working on that limited budget, but I am happy that we were able to reduce fees in the past, and, or reverse those fees, and I think it's still a good idea to, as Mr. Rabel pointed out, to keep that 70% target out there. I think that's the prudent thing to do at this moment in time, hopefully, we can bring back other programs as things improve in the local economy, so, thank you again, thank the gals here in front for all the work they put in, we appreciate that.
Councilmember Coles.
Back on. I too want to thank staff for really taking seriously the efforts to reduce the structural deficit, and while doing that, address the five priorities that the council set about a year and a half ago. And thank you, Patrick, for pointing out, as we went through the budget, where we've really targeted those things that we set as priorities, and I hope we can do that again in the future, when we have some resources to work with as a council, because there are only three of us on this council that were here at that point, and we have two more people that could, we could use their insight on some of the priorities we have as well. I also, I try to keep in mind that, you know, a city is not a money-making business, you know, we're here to use the money that we have access to, to provide a quality of life for our citizens, for our children, and for the cultural aspect of living in a city like we're fortunate to have here. So, as we have better times, better economic times, I would like to be able to continue to expand some of the community programs we have without making people have to pay high rates of fees and so forth to participate in them, because a lot of people can't afford that, and they get cut out of some of the things that we have here in the city, so, I just want to be sensitive to the fact that, as a city, we can't always have a profit line on our budget balance. We should be spending some of our money to enhance the quality of life and the access to services for our residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate my thanks also to staff for putting this budget together for us, and for the city, and I just want to ditto what other council members have said, that we've done a great job, the city's done a great job, especially with reference to the structural deficit. I think we're going in the right direction with that, and I just want to say thank you.
Mayor, if I could make a comment, just to follow up on the City Council priorities, it's our expectation that in March of 2014, we'll reconvene the council at a workshop and set new priorities going forward.
Okay. Before we move on, I would also like to thank the staff, you guys did a great job, and made it easy to understand for us, I think that that's great, and we definitely are going the right way in our structural deficit, so, we were around several years ago, and it was not looking, it was looking very grim, so, it looks pretty positive right now, so, I'm very happy with that. Thank you all, the staff in the back too, we appreciate all of you guys. I also appreciate you staying for so late for this meeting, that's so nice, you're all, you're our big audience back there. Okay, with that, we're ready to move on to the next thing? Yes, the next thing we're going to move on to is our item D3, our 2013-14 Capital Projects, Capital Improvement Program, I think John Conley is going to take that.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. We're going to cover the Capital Improvement Program budget, I have a PowerPoint that's coming up here, thank you. I put some pictures in it, because it's getting late. Before we get too into it, I'd also want to thank the people that worked on this budget, particularly Deb Lopez and Jeanette Ferris, as well as all the engineering staff, and Greg Meyer, it was just like the operating budget along process, so I really appreciate the efforts of those folks that they put into it. The Capital Improvement Program budget is a five-year budget that we typically budget for the following fiscal year, and then we'll have outlying years that we plan for additional funding, but the budget is specifically made for the following fiscal year, so that we can allocate funding for projects that are forthcoming. So, in the CIP document, there's a summary of funding sources and budgeted uses of that funding, and then there's details for each specific project. I'll generally cover some of the sources of funding, and then go through projects real specifically in areas where we're going to spend money. If there's specific questions about any project that's identified, I'm happy to stop and answer any questions. So, first, I always like to look at some of the achievements that we've achieved from the prior fiscal year, and so, I'll cover a couple of those that have completed construction this year. The first was discussed earlier, the South Santa Fe Detention Basin, which was completed this year, and it removed about 75 properties on South Santa Fe out of the flood zone, and is allowing us to move forward with the Paseo Santa Fe project, so, big achievement, and probably the last use of redevelopment money that we'll be able to take advantage of. We've completed sidewalks on Maryland Drive and Eucalyptus Avenue. The Maryland Drive was some Safe Routes to School funding, Eucalyptus Avenue was money that we got from the school district through redevelopment, which also is going away, but luckily, we were able to capture some good pedestrian projects as part of this project. We've gotten a lot of kudos specifically for the Eucalyptus improvements, because it provided an access that did not previously exist. We included, we constructed a turn lane on Shatter Ridge Drive at South Melrose, which was a critical operational improvement, improving capacity there. We included a signal at North Melrose, West Los Angeles, and Highland Drive, this has been in our signal priority list for several years, and so, we funded and constructed it this year, as well as curb ramps at the intersections there. We completed several city welcome signs, which has been in the planning for a number of years, the, on the left is the old sign, on the right is the new sign, this is the one out on East Vista Way near Taylor Street. The final sign in this program that we have funded in the current budget will be on Civic Center Drive in the median, near the Sprinter Station there, and that should be constructed sometime at the end of this month. We updated our pavement management system, which is the program we use to manage our pavement system throughout the city, it ranks all the city streets, we like to keep that updated every year or two, so that we can manage the streets more effectively. The primary recommendation in this year's management program was to look at maintaining the streets that we've already put significant investment into, so we have a lot more money programmed into slurry seal and overlays, where it's not complete reconstruction of the road, and that's through this program. And finally, a couple of sewer projects, we completed a major project in Carlsbad, the pump station adjacent to the lagoon that broke open, and we had a spill in 2007, the reconstruction of that line was completed. We did a major lining project along Hacienda Drive that runs from Melrose all the way over to the western city boundary, and we completed a forced main in the Buena Sanitation District from the pump station up to Melrose. So, getting into the CIP document, there are three general funding sources that we program the money under, that we identify those as general, streets and sewer, those are the three primary areas. There's 18 different funding sources that the money's allocated into each of those areas, depending on what the money is programmed for, some is general and can be used for a number of things, some is very specific and has to be used for exactly what it was programmed for. In the general categories, Parks and Recreation, Public Facilities, and Redevelopment Projects, those three categories total about $3.4 million in funding, the Streets Project totaled about $9.4 million, and the big bulk of the funding, as Mr. Johnson noted, is in the sewer program with about $50 million in funding in the next fiscal year. So, I'll run through projects real quickly, this is a list that's comprehensive, and there's a project detail sheet in the CIP for each of these projects, so, behind, at the end of each project, just identification, if it's a CO in blue, that means we're carrying funding over from prior years, there's no new funding being allocated. If there's a red number, that's money that's being allocated in this year's budget for that specific project, so I'll just cover the ones that we're going to allocate money for, unless you have any specific questions. First is the Buena Vista Creek Trail Improvements, this is a project to extend the creek trail from Ponderosa and Vale Terrace into the park, we received a grant for this, and so, the city's match is $145,000, which is developer fees that we're collecting for park improvements. In Public Facilities, that are all carryover projects, in redevelopment, we're providing funding for the Paseo Point Affordable Housing Project through the DDA that the council approved earlier this year, we're allocating $3.25 million in housing funds for that project, and those funds are specifically earmarked for housing, so they must be used for housing projects. In the Streets Department, our annual construction overlay, this is reconstruction of streets generally, and it's a catch-all for money that we have left over in transnet or traffic funds, so we have about $1.3 million programmed there. For the Paseo Santa Fe Street Improvements, which is essentially the reduction in width on Santa Fe from four lanes to two, and a pedestrian enhancement of that corridor, the first phase of that project is funded in this budget of about $3 million, that's primarily development impact fees and transnet monies that we're using for that project. North Avenue Widening, which follows this presentation for award, is a widening project to accommodate pedestrian access and additional traffic capacity between Melrose and Maryland on North Avenue. We have a northbound turn lane on South Melrose at Hacienda that we're providing funding for, we're looking at studying some of the downtown intersections that are going to need improvements as part of the reduction in capacity on Santa Fe, and so, we're going to program $250,000 to studying those intersections and making some recommendations for operational improvements in and around the Paseo Santa Fe area. A traffic problem that we, that seems to be increasing is South Melrose and Faraday, there's a lot of southbound right turns at that intersection, and so, we're going to try to accommodate a new turn lane to improve operations there. We're filling a gap in sidewalks on South Melrose between Sunset and the city boundary down near Cannon, there's a high use of that area by pedestrians and no current sidewalks, so we're programming some money to build a sidewalk there. We have $100,000 program for all of Avenue Overpass, which is to evaluate the feasibility of that project and look for, to set it up for possible grant funds in the future. And we are funding improvements at West Vista Way and Vista Village, which is associated with the North County Ford DDA. On the maintenance side, we have money that we program annually for curb and gutter improvements, the resurfacing is the big number that I talked about earlier, where we're going to be doing a lot of slurry seal and lesser detailed overlays per our pavement management system program, and update of the pavement management system in the following fiscal year. In traffic signals, we're carrying over all of the current projects, we have some money identified for signal modifications, which is primarily to evaluate and improve operationally different signals throughout the city. We have two major drainage projects, those are Boba Link and Townsite, those are both projects that have been in the CIP in past years, we're just providing additional funding. Because we collect so little in drainage developer funding, we allocate a little bit every year until we have enough to build these projects, and then they'll move forward. The final area is sewer. The big one is Vista-Carlsbad Interceptor, Aguahedi Yanda Pump Station Replacement, $25 million, that's a full replacement of the pump station adjacent to the lagoon, that includes a train, bridge, trestle across the lagoon, and we are co-sponsors of that project with the City of Carlsbad, and I believe the water, I'm not sure, I know the City of Carlsbad and the City of Vista are combining on that, we pay about 60% of the cost of that project. On the Encina Wastewater CIP, that's just our annual allotment for their CIP program. In Mona Vista Drive, we have a sewer improvement program to replace a pipe on the street there, from Valley, I believe, to South Santa Fe. Delby Ditch Sewer Protection is an existing pipe that's getting exposed by creek or runoff, and so, we need to do some protection of that existing line. Citrus Avenue, improvement to upsize and realign, some manhole improvements, and the Business Park Drive culvert, is a culvert that runs under the street that has to be structurally lined in order to maintain its integrity. In Buena, we have an Outfall Forced Main Extension, which is funded, that's the largest funding, that's to construct a long line along Palmyra Port Road. Again, we have an Encina Wastewater contribution for the Buena Sanitation, similar to Vista. We have an upsize of a pipe in Green Oak Road, and another relocation in Thibodeau-Watson Finally, we have Rehab in Environmentally Sensitive Areas, we're funding South Santa Fe Sewer, which is part of the county's widening project, that's just to put funding into that project, we don't have a construction timeframe at this point, and we are providing some funding for some pump station upgrades within the system. Finally, I wanted to comment, there were some additional reviews of the budget by the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission, they both made recommendations to the council on this year's budget. The Parks and Recreation Commission recommended appropriating $15,000 toward a skate spot at one of the parks in town, they actually identified five different parks that they would recommend it at. The staff's not recommending that funding at this point, pending a site investigation for a skate park facility, but it is at the council's discretion if additional funding is wanting to be allocated. The Planning Commission also recommended funding to evaluate the feasibility of widening East Vista Way from the northern city boundary down to Taylor Street, where it necks down from four lanes to two lanes. There's currently a pending annexation and development project north of town that the city is asking to make some improvements along that corridor, and so, staff's recommending that we wait to see what happens with that development project before we spend any additional public funds on that improvement project. And that completes my staff recommendation, we're recommending that the council approve this year's Capital Improvement Program budget. Thank you.
Any questions on this?
Any speakers?
I have two speakers, you want to hear those first?
Sure.
Okay, Harvey Bush first. Thank you for hanging around, Harvey, for so long.
Before I start, on a personal level, I want to thank the council for its support of the Operation Hope Dinner and Auction last Saturday night. Don't have the final numbers, but it appears we had another successful event, and we do appreciate your support. I live out on Melrose Way, 1244 Melrose Way, our family's been out here 47 years, so we like that neighborhood. We have a problem at the Breeze Hill School with the traffic situation there. David Lacy has been our point person, the neighborhood point person on this problem, he has been discussing the situation with city staff, and we have bought a lot of help from them, we appreciate that. The information that's in your packet, the letter dated the 7th of May, the photographs, and the petition of some 23 residents, has been furnished to you by Dave. He was prepared to speak to the council two weeks ago, when the item was on the agenda, but since it was rescheduled to tonight, he's actually out of the country, he cannot be here to speak tonight. So, I guess I'm talking personally, as well as for David. I do notice in the binder, the agenda binder in the hall, that the Melrose Way improvements that we had requested, they're not listed, so I assume that that's, is an appropriation for 2013, 2014, so I assume that that's not going to happen. And I'm just wondering if I shouldn't take any more time tonight, but we should come back again next year and talk about this improvement, is this correct?
Mr. Conley? So, the Melrose Way sidewalk project is a project that was in the CIP last year, funded largely by redevelopment, school safety money, so money that was funneled through the redevelopment agency to the school district and given back to the city to do sidewalk improvements around schools. We got about a half million roughly in dollars on an annual basis from the district to do these projects, and we were doing several of them up till last year, when that money was eliminated as a result of the state's elimination of redevelopment, so, we no longer have that funding available to us, and it was pulled out of all of the existing projects, including this project. So, there's $58,000 roughly in deferred street construction money, which is money we've taken from different property owners, and they've done improvements over the years, and in account to do improvements on that street. We can't go back to all those property owners and give them that money back, it's just not feasible, so we're going to make an improvement project out there and spend some money, it's just a lot more limited than what we had originally budgeted for, because the redevelopment money went away. So, we plan on doing some intersection improvements right near the intersection, and try to improve pedestrian access, but we had planned to build a sidewalk down the street, and we just don't have the money to do that, unless the council wants to allocate other funding to that project.
But the widening of the Melrose Way will not happen?
Only at the intersection, right next to the signal. We're proposing some pedestrian improvements to accommodate capacity across the intersection, but down the street on Melrose Way? No, sir, that's not planned.
I thought about it, right across from the school.
Correct, right across from the school, there's a small area near the intersection, but as you move down the road, when you're across from the school, that area won't be improved.
Okay. I have to agree with David in his letter, he indicated this is a dangerous situation. He indicated this is a dangerous situation. It happens twice a day when, when parents are dropping their students off in the morning and then in the afternoon when they're picking them up. And there are times the traffic is just at a standstill. I'm concerned that, I have seen drivers, including big trucks, crossing the, the double orange line, yellow line, and proceeding 100 or 200 feet the wrong way to get past the traffic that's waiting to get into the school to pick up the kids. I've also, I'm concerned, I, the church across from the school is being used for, for overflow parking. Some parents pick up their children up and walk to, back to the parking lot. And they're crossing, they're crossing between cars. Some are, some cars are moving. All this is happening at the curb in Melrose where you cannot tell who's coming because of all the traffic that's there. And it is a serious problem. And we're concerned that there could be some personal injury or a bad accident there at some point. So maybe later in your five-year plan, it can be winded in that area to correct this problem because something, it's an accident about to happen. We have, also in the letter, we have listed other actions that could be taken to, to help that situation. And if we can't get the widening of the road done, we're asking that the city look at these other acts that we would suggest to. And they're, they're in your packet.
Councilor Aguilera wanted to ask you.
Actually, I have comments on the CIP, but I did, on, when the school went in, they weren't required to do some of the improvements at that time? Or was that just overlooked?
No, the school district's responsible for improving their frontage, which they've done. But across the street, they don't have the obligation, or down the street, or to the next neighborhood. And generally, school districts will go in, they'll build their school, they'll build their frontage. They don't have money budgeted to build sidewalks off-site. It becomes ultimately the city's obligation. That was why the redevelopment money was so useful and why was, what it was intended for in the first place. But, you know, that's just not available anymore. But yeah, the district's obligation under the state code is only to improve their frontage.
However, if a business created that kind of traffic, they would be required to mitigate for that, right? If it was a regular business, commercial?
If you're talking about a, a sequel requirement, the districts are, just like businesses, obligated to mitigate their impacts under sequels. So the district, when they do build a school, has to go through sequel and identify where there's significant impacts and mitigate those impacts. So they do do some off-site improvements when there's significant impacts. But things like this where it's pedestrian access is not typically a significant traffic impact.
Even though they're dealing with a lot of little pedestrians?
It's just how it's typically done.
Yeah, and the picture looks like a lot of traffic impacts.
Crazy. Well.
And there are times when emergency vehicles would not be able to get through that area. It's really a real problem.
So we have recognized a safety issue out there. Our traffic engineer, Mr. Hassan, is here tonight. I know he's been out there and met with Mr. Lacy before. And he has made arrangements to make some improvements out there. I just don't know that it's to the extent that's been requested in the letter. I'd be happy to have him address the council if you'd like.
I hope it's something we can look at in the future and address that concern because, you know, it's kids that we're dealing with. And it's, it's like our next item is dealing exactly with a very similar situation. So thank you for your concern.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Coles wanted to ask you something maybe?
Yeah, I, I sympathize with your concern. I used to go there often when I was with the school district. And, and part of the money that used to come was kind of through school safety funding. And the district had options to allocate that in different regions of the city where, that affected the schools. And was that a joint decision between the city and the school district, how that money was spent? And was this at some point a priority for both the district and the city?
When we were still receiving the money, yes, it was on the last list of approved projects by the district.
Did they, was there a price tag associated with the, the cost of that, that improvement?
I think it was three something when we originally budgeted it in last year's budget, 300 and some thousand.
Well, as we, as our budget options look healthier, I would like to see how this fits in with. I know we've got a lot of dangerous points of convergence in the city. But I think this is especially with the children and stuff, one that, that I would like to see as a, where it fits in the priorities that we have ahead of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for filling in.
Our next speaker is, is Ariane Freeville?
Good evening. I am here to bring to your attention a possible capital improvement project. I'm talking about the open face drainage on Euclidus Avenue, the exhaust of the street between the Masonic Center and Tiger Tail. I love what you guys have done on Euclidus Avenue, that sidewalk that is more west. And I would like to see that happening on the other side of the street. So I live on the street, and I believe this ugly drainage should be closed and a sidewalk should be built on it. It's actually unsafe to walk on that side of Euclidus Avenue. I've had actually a few close calls while jogging or walking my dogs. And I see ladies with strollers and kids on skateboards or bikes all the time. And cars are just too close for comfort. I've also seen raccoons, dead rats, and kids playing in it. I don't know how the kids got in. I think it's large enough that it could be closed and the sidewalk put on it. There's about, there's at least five yards that could be used for that. So I just wanted to ask you to consider this project in the near future, long-term or short-term, I think it would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Aguilera, do you have some? Are you from last time?
No.
From next time?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, so I guess that's where we are now then. So, go ahead.
I was wondering if I could get an update on the VAPA recreational facilities? What's going on there?
I think we could have Mr. Fortmiller come up and give us a status update.
Hello? Yes, the, I think the school district is going through the validation process right now of all the bids that went out. And the, I believe there's supposed to be a pre-con meeting on June 26. And construction hopefully will start shortly after that. And they anticipate about a year's construction.
When, when was that, I would guess?
June, June 26 would be the pre-con. Construction starts shortly after that. And about a year for the project to be completed.
So possibly by next summer?
Possibly, yes.
Possibly?
Assuming everything goes, goes as planned.
All right, thank you. Maybe next winter.
Maybe next winter.
I have a couple other questions. So, Mr. Connolly, I have concerns about the Olive Avenue Overpass, the 100,000. That we're thinking about spending on that. And then maybe if we start with the Vista Village, Vista Way, or West Vista Way, the money that we're going to spend there, what, what does that entail, that $300,000?
That entails closing the free right turn lane that goes from Vista Village Drive onto Vista Way. And, and closing that little island that's in the street and making it all one fronting property across from North County Ford to accommodate the development of a feature car dealership.
Okay.
And that, that item will go through if?
Those are two separate, I mean, those are completely separate items then.
Right, but the, the city's contribution to doing the street improvements is tied to the DDA that was agreed to with North County Ford to develop that site.
Okay. I was confused if they were close together. All right, so then maybe we can talk about the Olive Avenue Overpass?
So Olive Avenue Overpass is seen as a congestion relief project because of the intersection that, you know, Vista Village in North Santa Fe is so significantly affected by the train crossing and the bus stop and Olive Avenue and all the traffic that goes in and out. So we would like to take a close look at what putting that improvement in would do to the operations there. And if it's feasible to, you know, come up with a conceptual design and put some work into preparing it for some grant money so that we could pursue grant money to build that project.
Okay, so I know this has been talked about for years. And at one time it was like nine or, I don't know, $9 million or?
It's, I think, somewhere in the 15 to 20 million dollar range is the last estimate I heard.
So, I mean, what is the likelihood of that really happening, I guess?
Well, I mean, we don't know unless we put some money into evaluating it. And, you know, we, the likelihood of getting 15 or 20 million dollars in one grant application is not huge. But there is railroad grade separation money that's available, both through the grant process and through Sandag with the future double tracking of the Sprinter line. There are some grade separated crossings that are funded as part of that. You know, instead of putting a bridge over Vista Village Drive that's, you know, crosses across the whole, you know, Vista Village area to get the railroad tracks over the street, maybe the Olive Avenue Overpass alleviates that congestion enough to not require a grade crossing there and to put the grade crossing at Olive. I mean, those are some of the things that we want to look at.
Okay.
So that, that's really what the money is intended to do, to evaluate the feasibility of it and see, you know, if it will truly improve traffic the way folks have projected it will in the past.
So there is some, some chance, I guess?
We believe there's some merit to the project. You know, we'd like to put some money into looking at it closer and setting it up that, yeah, we think there's some chance. As far as how much we can put together and what the project comes out to be and a true cost estimate, that's part of what this money is for.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Do we need a motion on this?
Do we, yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to adopt or approve this proposal.
I'll second it. I just have one more question though.
Okay.
Might, I forgot. The, you said something about appropriating $15,000 towards a skate spot. And I didn't catch the last part where you said that.
We're, we're evaluating some sites for a skate park. We're hoping that we can bring something to the council in the next few months to update you on that process and hopefully take some steps towards, you know, confirming a site and moving forward. So we didn't think that putting money into other smaller skate facilities was feasible until we had an answer to that question. In staff's opinion, we'll be at the end of that process by the next CIP budget. And if we can't resolve what we're trying to resolve, then, you know, maybe that's the time to put some money into some smaller skateboard facilities.
We plan on, if we can't work out during this fall season, if we can't work out something with one of the properties in particular that we're looking at, we will come back before the council to discuss this skate spot issue. I do have my doubts on the $15,000 amount. Nothing that we ever do costs just $15,000 with accessibility issues. But we will come back for the council.
Okay. I second it, yeah, I second it.
Yeah, motion and second, okay. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item is our CIP North Avenue Widening and Sidewalk Project Award of Contract.
Does the city council wish to have a report on this?
I don't need one.
Careful. Okay, do you need a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve this contract. And I'd like to second it.
Okay.
No speakers?
No speaker, oh, wait, 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 I do have a speaker. No, that's public hearing two. Nope, I don't have any.
Very quick.
Okay, pass your vote. Okay, next public, no, we're going to public hearings. My speaker's on public hearing two. So the public hearing one, which is a collection of delinquent fiscal year, we debate my charges. So does anybody want to report?
No.
No.
Do we have speakers on any of these?
So the public hearing is open. So.
I'll make a motion to.
Close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing, okay. And take staff's recommendation on the we debatement.
I'll second that.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Motion castes unanimously. The next public hearing, number two, is the levy of delinquent fiscal year mandatory trash charges. And I have one speaker on that, Tom Klein. Is Tom here?
Yep.
Tom? The public hearing is open. And you waited until the last minute?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm here in regards to a trash bill that I received with a penalty now from the Vista City. And it, I just don't understand why Vista leaders have to be involved in this. First, I would like to say I'm very upset that I received, and I'm expected to pay for a tenant's trash bill. I received no advance notice that I was responsible for their bills. I signed no contract and received no paperwork or advance notification that there was a problem. Since the city of Vista arbitrarily bills me for the EDCO bills and tax on penalties, am I also responsible for the tenant's car payments, their credit cards, their income tax? And I could go on and on. EDCO has deeper pockets than I do. And they qualify their customers. They approve them. So why aren't they taking business responsibility if a tenant doesn't pay their trash bill? I don't understand that. I don't receive their profits when they make a profit. I don't receive anything at all. So is that fair? I guess last of all, I'd like to say, why am I getting penalized for something that's on this agenda today when I received a bill over a month ago? I welcome any comments from.
Did you pay your bill a month ago?
No, I did not pay it because I wanted to come here tonight and voice my opinion to the situation. But this is a, this is the item on the agenda today. So why and how could I get billed and a 10% penalty being put on a bill when it's on your agenda today? I'm really confused about that.
Somebody answer that?
Sure, I'd be happy to talk about this. EDCO is the waste haulers, everybody knows. There's mandatory trash charges unless you can opt out and prove that you have another option for disposing of trash. As the property owner, you're responsible for trash payments. I believe in your case, your bill was prob, the bill of the tenant was probably a couple of months delinquent. The EDCO had sent out notices, the city sent out notices on April 15, as well as setting the public hearing with the city council on April 23, that tonight would be the public hearing. And as you have in your packet, the pay, the payments were due on June 6 so that there wouldn't be an extra penalty putting them on the tax roll.
Why am I responsible for a business that can't seem to manage their business? Every business succeeds or it doesn't succeed because of the way they run their business. Why am I responsible for EDCO's business? Why don't they charge the tenant or anybody else some kind of fee upfront and hold it as a deposit or whatever? I'm not going to say how they should run their business. What I am saying is, I don't understand why I have to be responsible for other people's bills. That just doesn't make sense to me.
The way our current process works in Vista, as well as a few other cities, is that if the property owners or the tenants, and then it defaults to the property owners, do not pay their bill, then the city, the city gets involved at that point later in the year and puts those charges on the tax roll so that EDCO is made whole for their trash charges.
Why didn't I get a notice? Why didn't somebody notify me that that's the policy? I'm getting notified now with a bill and a penalty.
Well, EDCO sent out notification of the bill.
No, I'm talking about if you have a rental property, you are responsible for X, Y, Z. Now, EDCO should have given me something in writing. And I didn't fill anything out. They don't have anything signed by me. So to me, when a business runs a business, I'm used to contracts. I didn't receive any contract. And now I'm getting blindsided. And you're telling me that's their policy? And then it defaults to the city? Well, what am I responsible for next? Do I have to make their car payments? Do I have to pay their taxes? Do I have to pay their credit card? Do I have to pay for their children?
See, trash charges are mandatory. See, trash charges are mandatory. And so therefore it defaults to the property owner to pay those trash charges. I understand that you're, what you're saying about the tenant getting the bill, but the city did notify you in April and I think you received that, correct?
After the fact, now that I have a bill, all of a sudden because my tenant didn't pay it.
You're the property owner, so--
Yeah, but you know what? I didn't sign anything.
What about the water bill and the SDG and all those, you know, I think you're the property owner, so in the end, that property owner's responsible.
Where is it in writing?
Well--
It's in the municipal code. It's a law. It's not a contract. It's a law in the city of Vista that the property owner's responsible and it's been a law for several decades.
And I'm supposed to know every law and every code?
Well, it's, you've apparently been lucky that you've just never had a defaulting tenant before, I guess.
Well, here's another situation I want to bring up. If Edco wasn't getting their payments, why wasn't I notified? Oh yeah, let it run up and then, then the owner has to pay for it.
You'll have to ask Edco that, I would think, but--
Well, wait a minute, now it's not, Edco's not involved. Now the city of Vista's involved.
Well--
The city of Vista only gets involved when accounts have been delinquent for a period of two months or more. Or two payment cycles or more, which equates to four months or more. And that's when the city gets involved.
I don't understand why a business doesn't run their, their business properly and now the city of Vista has to be involved. To me, I'm paying you people to get involved. Here I am tying up your time. I pay taxes to pay for your salaries over this because a business can't operate properly? If they can't operate properly, then you should get somebody else.
You should get somebody else.
The rationale, and this goes back considerably in time, you can debate it or not, is that trash service is mandatory as a public health situation. We have to have the trash picked up.
Okay.
And somebody has to pay for it. It's not a question of an optional business arrangement where you decide you, you know, you want to have a delivery of a newspaper or something like that. It's mandatory and that's why it became the responsibility of the property owner because we don't want trash piling up on your property, which would happen if it was a purely voluntary system.
And I'll, I'll give you another example too with water. You might have a tenant that rents from you that pays the water bill and if the tenant doesn't pay the water bill, then it goes delinquent, the water meter gets locked. Now, if you're going to go forward and rent that to a new tenant or you're going to open that water meter back up, you're going to end up paying, as a property owner, the penalties, the delinquent penalties and any sort of fees they might have associated with it. They have the option to turn off the service. On the trash side, we don't have the option to turn off the service.
Well, you know, I could see, I just don't understand why I wasn't notified and now I'm expected to pay this. You know, this could go on and on. How would you feel if you were trying to just succeed in this world and run a business and all of a sudden you get blindsided? You know, at least warn me that there's an issue.
And I think that's why the notice on April 15th was sent as a warning that there was an issue before it went further to be put on the tax roll and to have an administrative fee or any sort of penalties associated.
Sir, they moved out in November.
Exactly. And we do it on a fiscal year basis, so the, the property was delinquent for four months and so that's why you got the notice on April 15th.
Okay.
I--
I said my piece and I can see that I'm not going to get anywhere. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. So with that, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve this item, agenda item.
Second.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Next public hearing, we'll open the public hearing levy of delinquent fiscal year property-related administrative citation charges. You want to report?
Nope.
No.
Any speakers?
No speakers.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the item.
I'll second it.
Okay, please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing number four, we'll open the public hearing on the collection of delinquent fiscal year sewer charges, 2012-13 sewer charges. Does that report?
Any speakers?
No speakers.
I'll move to close the public hearing and approve the item.
I'll second it.
Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing number five, we'll open the public hearing levy of assessments for fiscal year 2013-14. Public hearing is open, we have no speakers.
I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2013-14.
I'll second it.
Please cast your votes. That passes unanimously and public hearing number six, our last public hearing, 2012 RTP, Regional Transportation Improvement Program Amendment. And would you like a report on that one? No. Okay, I would entertain a mo, did I open the public hearing? I think I did. Okay, no speakers.
I'll move to close the public hearing and approve the 2012 Regional Transportation Improvement Program Amendment.
That passes unanimously. And the next thing is oral communications. I don't see anyone here to speak. So then we have the next thing, our remarks, our remarks from members. What about, it doesn't say city manager, does it? Member, it doesn't say city manager. Do you have a report?
City officials?
You're not going to include me?
In what?
Kidding.
Don't kid me, I'm just too late.
Are you asking me for a report?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to thank, echo what Mr. Conley said on thanking Jeanette and Deb Lopez and Greg Maynor and the engineering staff on the CIP. Deb Lopez in particular, from the financial side, has done a great job refining the CIP over the last two years and making it a much more thorough document. So that's a really good thing that's happened for the city. And the only thing I want to say other than that is happy birthday to Councilman Aguilera tomorrow.
Oh.
Thank you for reminding me.
Another year older. Okay, so I, and so that I'll start with, Councilmember Rigby, do you have anything tonight?
I, I do, I have a couple of things. And Mr. Bush, who's gone already, alluded to the Operation Hope barbecue and event on Saturday night. We were all there, including our city manager, and I did my level best to donate as much as possible with taking home a live auction item, two silent auction items and two raffle baskets, so--
You bought tickets from your daughter?
And I did, I bought tickets from my beautiful daughter, Ms. Vista, who goes around selling a bunch of raffle tickets everywhere that she can. So it was a really great event and I was glad to be there and participate and donate a lot of money to them. Also, I was, Deputy Mayor Coles and I went to the opening of the Holocaust Museum at the San Diego County Fair. And I have to say, I, I found it very interesting that that would be at a county fair, but I found it to be very worthwhile and I appreciated and understood why they put it in such a high traffic area to get more people to see it, visit it, and experience it. And that was a really great event to go to and I was very happy and honored to be invited to go to that opening, so I appreciate that. And I did want to report on the city selection committee meeting yesterday with the coastal commission. Is that the three names, did you want to know the three names that were put forward for that, for the state? It was Sam Abad from Escondido, Cheryl Cox from Chula Vista, and Todd Gloria from San Diego. So that's what the city selection committee came up with yesterday. And our assistant city manager and I were attending, we attended that meeting along with the California League of Cities meeting, the regular division meeting. And it was just a recap of all of the legislative items that we've already discussed previously with a request again for more letters for SB seven, which we have already done. So that's what I have. So thank you very much and happy birthday, John.
And you know why I've been calling you councilmember all night? It's Deputy Mayor Coles.
First of all, I, before I left tonight, I clicked on one of my emails and it popped up, the, a wave Groupon opportunity to buy, so whoever's responsible, Bill, congratulations for getting a high-profile advertising through Groupon. And if you need to know, you can save 47% if you buy within the next five days. It actually is five days and four hours. I mean, it clicks down, so good luck. I hope that's a success. And again, Councilmember Rigby and I were both fortunate enough to be able to go to the Courage to Remember exhibit at the Delmar Fair and to experience a preview of what was to come in the fair. They had all the food available for consumption, which was not a good thing. And bacon is the theme this year, so they had a turkey leg wrapped in one pound of bacon available if you, if you're interested. John, now that you're getting older, you can't eat that stuff anymore. The same day I was able to go to the great graduation ceremony that our sheriff's department puts on at Grapevine Elementary. And again, that's always a real highlight to be able to see the children engaging with our law enforcement the way they do at those. And then last Saturday, we had the Moonlight Gala, again, another peak experience. We even got, we got the preview or got the notice of next summer, not this summer, but next summer's productions, which is an exciting venue ahead of us. We're going to get Spamalot even and some, some great things ahead for the moonlight. Thursday, there was a reception that some of us went to for Rose Marie Reno at Tri-City Hospital honoring some of her achievement as a hospital board member. And then Operation Hope, thank you for reminding me. And Helen, thank you for selling, you sold the lucky tickets to your mother. Mine weren't so lucky. But that was for a good cause and I do, I did spend money. These were on the silent auction, they were advertised as Australian she oak pins. And I paid more than the, the minimum bid and got home and I opened the box and it said "Made in Taiwan." But, but they're beautiful. So anyway, that's, that's all I have.
Councilmember Campbell?
No comment.
How about, birthday boy?
I don't have--
Councilmember Reguilera?
I just want to thank everyone for that. Yeah, I had a chance to go to Operation Hope and it was an enjoyable evening and you also sold me some bum tickets too. So, but I won't hold it against you. I also had an opportunity to go down to the city finals or whatever you want to call it for baseball. And, you know, we have a city tournament that the leagues put together and it's kind of neat because it gets all three leagues together and I know Councilmember Rigby was there on the finals game as well. But it was a fun event and if you ever get a chance to go out to, to watch those, you know, you got Shadow Ridge and you got North Vista and you got the middle of Vista and they're all competing to, to be the best, so it's fun for the, for the boys and the family, so that's all I've got for now.
I would Operation Hope too. And I had, they had great barbecues, but, and I, but you know, I saw on the news that San Diego, it was on the national news, that San Diego have donuts with barbecue in the middle in San Diego.
They're, they're Krispy Kreme--
Krispy Kreme--
Sloppy Joes.
Sloppy Joes, can you imagine?
It's nasty.
Yeah, it's nasty, so. Let me give you upcoming events here that I can give you, I'll just give you kind of, oh, this Saturday, our Movies in the Park, we bought a zoo. Now, it's like Patrick said, the city didn't buy a zoo, that's the name of the movie. It's at the Vista Magnet Middle School at dusk, whatever time dusk is, be there. On June 15th and 16th, also Saturday and Sunday, is Antique Engine and Tractor Show at the Antique Gas and Steam Engine Museum from 9:00 to 4:30. And that's also, it's this weekend and next weekend. Next weekend, June 22nd and 23rd, the Scottish Highland Games at Bringle Terrace Park and the Gathering of the Clans from 9:00 to 5:00. That's on Saturday and Sunday of next weekend. June 26th is a Taste of Vista, don't miss that. Let me tell you, they have the greatest food downtown, so that's from 4:00 to 8:00 Downtown Vista, June 26th. And July the 4th, of course, Independence Day Celebration and the Red, White and Boom Firework Show at Bringle Terrace Park. Starts, celebration starts at 4:00, fireworks at 9:00. If you wanted, Ada, you can also go to Alta Vista Gardens and they also have a program up there and dinner up there, so you can go either, either place. So I won't go on with the rest, but I'll go up to July the 4th. So that's all that I have to say tonight and I will, is anybody else? The city attorney have anything? City clerk down there? Mercy, no? With that--
Madam Mayor?
Got nine?
Madam Mayor?
Fifty-eight? Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I didn't look that way. I was looking that way.
I just, I just did want to add, and I was reminded about the Little League thing and I wanted to say publicly thank you to the National Little League people over off of Hanalee. They invited me to come to the championship game, which they thought would be Thursday, and it ended up being a tie in a series between the Reds and the Braves. And they had invited me into the booth and as a guest and for one inning, I got to work the scoreboard. But it wasn't a championship game, we had to go back the next night where the scoreboard operator actually didn't show up. So I got to be the guest scoreboard operator for the entire game. I didn't make too many mistakes and the ones I did make were only because I second guessed myself when I was right the first time. So I just want to say thank you to them for their hospitality in inviting me there and allowing me to present the championship trophy to the kids. That was a lot of fun and I enjoyed my two evenings out watching Little League.
Oh, good.
So I just wanted to say publicly thank you to all involved with the Little League programs. It was great.
Okay, with that, it's 8:59, can you believe it? We are adjourned.
Before nine?
Huh? We made it before nine? Oh, I just flipped. Nine o'clock.
Eight fifty-nine?
Eight fifty-nine was the official time, though.
It's after the--
Yeah.
Average these out.[1713.33]